Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled Tuesday July 3, 218 Planning Commission.
Oh, there I am, sorry. Thought the light was on. Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Tuesday, July 3, 218 Planning Commission. And we're at the Veterans Memorial Building on 209 Surf Street. Looking down the table, we have a full commission. So, we have a quorum and I'll call the meeting to order. Please, let's have a moment of silence here. Thank you very much. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, face the flag, and ready, begin.
(Pledge of Allegiance) The United States of America, to be the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Richard?
Yeah. In about a week and a half, two weeks, on Saturday, there's going to be a Rock to the Pier Run. And my church, we historically been doing the food for people there, so you don't have to actually run. You could just come in, get something to eat if you want. Everybody's welcome. So, it's just a great event for, you know, just showing our love to the community.
Okay. Anybody else? As everybody knows, tomorrow's 4th of July, so there, you know, just for you to be aware, there is a, I believe it's a $1,000 fine for fireworks violations. And as we're seeing up in the northern part of the state, there's, you know, we do have dry tinder as grasslands, so please, everybody enjoy, have a great holiday, but be careful and let's all get through this safe and sound. This time, we'll move on to public comment. This is the time we have the public come forward on items not on the agenda. Please state your name. If you're, do we have any takers? No? No takers? Please.
I was kneeling to the front row.
Planning Commissioners and staff. Good evening. My name is Robert Kraus. My wife and I are 20-year residents in Morro Bay. I am a Vietnam veteran and a proud American. If you take a look at page three of your handout, you will see the front view of my backyard neighbor's house, which was taken looking east from Current Avenue. If asked, my rear yard neighbors will tell you that they are patriots as well, because they have erected a 25-foot-high flagpole and placed it on an elevated and terrace portion of their 52-by-100-foot lot, seven feet from their rear fence, or the rear yard fence. If you look at page four, the Google Earth image, you will see the site location of the flagpole and the antenna. The only people that can see this flag is my wife and I and our side yard neighbors. The difference between these backyard residents and a majority of other Morro Bay residents who fly the American flag is that these neighbors, or that this neighbor is using the American/Indian flag as a weapon to take away the enjoyment of our home when we look out at Astero Bay and Morro Bay Rock. When you look at pages four, five, six, and seven of your handout, you will see the strategic placement of their flagpole and unattached TV antenna, which is located at the rear of their lot, 80 feet from their house. We have lived by these neighbors for 20 years. For 18 of those years, our neighbors never displayed any symbol of patriotism. It was only after we won a court judgment in 2014 that required our rear yard neighbor to lower their 23-foot-high hedge by 52 feet, that's a myoporum hedge, to comply with the Morro Bay fencing and screening ordinance, did these neighbors decide to show their patriotism. Looking at page four, five, six, and seven, you will notice their flagpole and TV antenna are erected through the middle of this illegal hedge. I have talked with Scott Graham on numerous occasions regarding our concerns. The last time I stood before the Planning Commission, October 4, 2016, I was given hope that the commission would rewrite the flagpole and antenna ordinance to make residents more considerate when they erect such structures on their residential lots. However, after reading module, planning module two and three, nothing has been added to change, added or changed to the language of these ordinances that will help us or any other member of the community when they are confronted with problems similar to ours. Commissioner Lucas once stated, quote, "We'll have to give Scott some more dentures," or "some dentures," end of quote, referring to the code enforcement. I took that to mean that the new language in the ordinance would limit the placement and the height of flagpoles and TV antennas on residential lots. However, after recently talking with Scott, I was told that there is nothing in the proposed code that would change the situation. In fact, by eliminating the intent of the existing satellite ordinance, if you look at page eight, where it quotes, "These regulations are intended to locate antennas and equipment where they are least visible from the public right of ways and to not burden adjacent property owners with adverse visual impact," end of quote, makes the new codes even weaker. This critical quote should be applied to both of your proposed flagpole and satellite and UHF/VHF antenna ordinances. In addition, restricting in-ground flagpole placement is not a slippery slope to the First Amendment. People don't have the First Amendment right to have a flagpole, but they do have the right to display a flag. As this commission's late chairperson, Dr. Robert Teff stated to the commission on October the 4th of 2016, "Flag placement can be a matter of time, place, and manner." If you look at page nine, you'll see the American Flag Act of 2005. If a homeowner in a residential zone must have a flagpole, then the city should restrict the height and placement to no higher than the ridge line of the house, and it should not be placed within the setbacks of the building envelope. It's my belief, flagpoles should be, should only be allowed on government, industrial, and commercial buildings. I hope you will take these common sense suggestions into consideration before you adopt the approved changes to the Morro Bay zoning ordinance. Thank you, and I hope you have a good 4th of July.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close, close public comment. I guess that's a pretty good question for you, Scott. What's...
Would be appropriate item to address as we get into the module three.
Module three? Okay. Okay. And that's later tonight for members of the public. We have no presentations, so we're, next on the agenda is A1, the consent calendar. We have a recommendation to receive and file. Anybody wish, have any discussion?
I'll move "We receive and file."
Second on the motion?
(Laughter).
Oh. We always slide.
Oh. Sorry. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Motion passes, 5-0.
(Inaudible)
Okay. So, next on the agenda is item B1, a public hearing, case number CPO-571/UPO-571, and the location is at 570 Kings Avenue in Morro Bay. Do we have any ex parte communication? Did this close? No? Okay. Is staff ready with a report?
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman Luer for working on getting that presentation back up on the screen. So, the project before you this evening is a request for conditional use permit and coastal development permit approval at 570 Kings Avenue. The applicants, Michael Smothers and Sherry Fortino, proposed the demolition of one of the existing residential units and the construction of two new units. The project is located within the R2 duplex residential zoning district and outside of the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction. The density allowance in this zone is one unit per 2,900 square feet, therefore, this 11,300-square-foot parcel can support three units upon the securing of a conditional use permit, as required by the Muni Code. The proposed project conforms to the development standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, including but not limited to the density, as previously stated, lot coverage and parking. You can see the density, the math comes out to 3.89 dwelling units, but you can't round up for density purposes until you get to 3.95, which is why they're limited to just This is the existing site, as seen from Kings Avenue, showing the existing residential structure at the front of the lot to be demolished, and it will be replaced with two new residential This is the proposed site plan, showing the existing two-story residential unit at the rear of the lot or to the right of that image, the existing three-car garage at the center, and then the two new attached single-story residential units at the front of the lot. One is 1,000 square feet and the other is 430 square feet. Floor plan that illustrates the new 1,000-square-foot, two-bedroom unit that's attached to the new studio unit in the center, which is attached to the existing three-car garage that will provide the required three parking spaces for the two residential units. Note, the requirement is for three covered spaces. The applicant is providing three covered and enclosed parking spaces. The north elevation at the top of the slide shows the front door at the right, which fronts on Kings Avenue. The south elevation illustrates the proposed structure as it will appear from the driveway. West elevation shows the front of the structure as it appears from the street and the existing two-story residence behind. Vaguely see that outline, I apologize. The east elevation illustrates the varying roof lines of the proposed new structure. The photo simulations do a nice job of illustrating how the proposed structure will fit with the existing development on-site and with the surrounding neighborhood. And so, therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit and coastal development permit for the project at 570 Kings with the adoption of Resolution 1918 and the associated findings and conditions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joan. Do we have any questions on staff? Michael?
Joan, do we have a requirement in this area for maximum allowable paved surface? In other words, between the roof and the paving, do we have a maximum in the zone?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
Okay. We do have storm runoff management plans, don't we, Joan?
Yes, absolutely, and it has been reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? We'll open public comment now with the applicant. Like to step forward and speak to this item?
Hello? I'm Mike Smothers. My wife, Sherry Fortino, is working right now, so she's a ballroom dance teacher, and she's giving lessons right now, so soon as we get done, I'm going back to help her.[922.82][922.82](Laughter).
Okay.
I think, actually, Joan pretty much described the project that I'm trying to do, actually, it's kind of a phase two of what we started about, we finished in November 2016, where we completed our personal residence on the back of the property, and we've been living there since then. And so, we're going to put this two-bedroom apartment and studio apartment in the same footprint as what is the houses is there, bringing all of the structures in the same, you know, roughly the same quality of construction and energy efficiency and the same look for the property.
Okay. Great. Seeing we have nobody else in the audience, I'm, well, she's our consultant for the next item.[981.66][981.66](Laughter). She's not the audience, she's working. So, unless, she's wishing to speak to this item. Do we have questions for the applicant? Okay. Michael?
I appreciate the density that you're adding, especially the unit that potentially is more affordable. The one thing that really concerns me is the articulation of the side towards the driveway. In other words, it looks like the driveway is significantly wider than is necessary to get back to the three parking spaces that you've got in the garages, as well as the two underneath. And I think when you look at the elevation or the rendering that was up before, looking up the driveway, there's actually almost nothing in front of the building until you get to the facade, so it almost looks like it's paved right up to the front. And so, the rear entrance, the entrance to the studio, for instance, is not articulated very, very much, and it gives the sense that you're, my sense is I'm going to see two cars parked in the driveway, side by side, or car parked against the neighbor's wall with another path for cars to go past it. And my big concern is I don't think it fits in with the neighborhood because of the site plan, and I'm astonished that there's adequate stormwater with that amount of paving on the thing. And it doesn't seem like you're coming in and changing any paving into pervious paving, so that's all runoff. So, that's why I'm kind of surprised.
May I?
Yes, please.
So, a few, a few things. The width of the driveway was maximized as much as possible due to the length of the driveway for fire purposes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Because the lot is so deep, the fire marshal needed a minimum, I mean, that, it's as small as he could make his exception to be, as narrow as...
That's unbelievable.[1116.33][1116.33](Laughter).
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but that's unbelievable. It conflicts with our, with our residential design standards. If it's something that he's going to impose, we need to have a number and we need to be aware of it, because that's, that's a, I think, all the goals they're trying to achieve, I think, are fine. I just don't think that that is an attractive front piece, considering someone else to walk in your home.
I would agree with you, actually, but the fire code requires that, because my, the back residence is a certain distance from the street, it requires that I provide what that is essentially a fire, a fire equipment access road. And so, I've extended it to the point where I'm within 150 feet of the back of the house so the fire equipment can get back up there to within 150 feet. It wasn't my idea to put it that wide. Believe me, it's not aesthetically pleasing, however, the stormwater system has been, actually oversized for the entire project with the intention of this, this project being done in the future. So, it's, you see the stormwater that's in between, and it's functioning really well. I mean, it's had some big storms and no problems whatsoever.
So, how much of the paving is going to be replaced or is existing that's going to stay? Is it all? So...
I'm not going to change any of that paving if I don't have to, because it's very expensive, it was a very expensive piece of driveway to put in, and as a result of the requirements of it, that'd be able to actually carry the weight of fire equipment in addition. So, I'm not going to take any out.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Any comment on this?
Well, I too was glad to see some effort to create more affordable housing in Morro Bay, and I got smaller accommodation at the back. And, you know, I liked that there's a similarity between the front structures and the house in terms of the compatibility of look, but I was also sensitive to the fact that you're much more conscious of the front building because it's not set back as the larger houses. You know, I was hoping that we could do something in terms of both adding more variation to that south-facing facade, which borders the driveway, and maybe do something in terms of the cladding so it's not all a stuccoed surface. And, you know, and I try to be careful not to impose my, my, my design taste to the degree that they become, you know, arbitrary and capricious, but, so I, you know, I would never comment on, on the particulars of a roof design or the number of windows or anything like that, but I just think in terms of massing on that, that one particular side and varying the surfaces with something other than stucco, you know, might improve the look of the building.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah. My only concern is we don't, we haven't been consistent with maybe looking at the secondary elevations as much as the kind of stereotonic way you look at the corners, and, you know, you do have some articulation of the front that I think is, is very responsible. I don't see much room, given that, some of the criteria you've given us that are constraints, short of asking for less square footage, and I don't want to certainly impose that, but I, I wish there was something that could highlight the differentiation between the studio and the main, or the front house, a little bit more. And in this one, there doesn't even seem to be any articulation of the stoop that goes into the, the studio, which I think on the plans, it seems to give some indication, something is happening out there. That's my biggest concern, is I wish there was some more articulation on, on the south, maybe at that juncture with the studio, or its entrance.
I, first off, I think that the existing house is adorable. I really like, I really like it. Yeah. However, I could totally understand how you want it to kind of blend in with the, where your, the residents in the back. Other than that, I, you know, what's already been said by the fellow commissioners, I, I feel that it's, it's a good project, and I appreciate, like, once again, the ability to, you know, future, you know, think about the future and have affordable living quarters for some of, some of our local residents.
Jesse?
Yes, want to agree with everybody, pretty much. Great project. I drove down there this morning on my way to work, and, you know, everybody was outside hustling, bustling, up and down Kings and down Pacific, and it seems like it's going to meld into the neighborhood perfectly. I think you did a great job. Bravo.
Okay. I have similar concerns on the elevations. You know, that, that south side elevation is going to be so exposed because of the width of the driveway, and I, I like the size of it, I also like that you're, that, you know, sometimes the best thing to do is to replace something. It can actually be cheaper and you can get more environmentally effective house with new construction than you can going back and remodeling something there. And sometimes things just aren't worth, aren't worth saving, both from a cost point and from, from even from a, from a thermally, thermal standpoint. But I do think you can do a little bit better on that, on the south and the, I guess it'd be the, the frontage elevation. You know, something as simple as a water table in that stucco detail that would line up with the sills of the windows would, I don't think it would really break the bank. You're talking...
I don't understand, water table?
Okay. It's basically a foam detail that would, would basically, would, it's called a water table, and it's, it's usually on the top of a, like a Wayne Scott, so it's usually lines up with the bottom sill of the windows, and it's sloped, and it can be, can be done in foam, so after the brown coat, you know, it's a, it's just a foam application and they color coat right over it. We're not talking, we're not talking about breaking the bank or anything high-tech. It would just, it would just be a good, something that would give it some texture and break the mass of the building a little bit.
So, you're, you're talking about...
So, come on up to the, please come up to this.
The mic.
The mic, so that everybody can hear.
So, you're, it seems to me that you're referencing the, just the overall look of, so it's just not one flat wall.
Right.
You would like to see some differentiation between the two structures.
Yeah, and it's also in our design codes, we've got, we've got, I guess, a requirement for articulation, and that's, that's the only thing I really have a problem with this, this building, is just, is just the articulation of it.
The reason I, that, that the studio is pushed all the way to the south is because I wanted to give some green space in the back, a patio area, and otherwise, if I push it the other way...
No, and that's not, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with location. I just think if you put a, if you put a little stucco detail on that wall, say, you know, whatever that sill height is on the windows, maybe 30 inches, whatever that is, and just wrap that around at least those two sides, where you're getting, where it's, where it's visible from the street, coming, coming in, because of that driveway is so, so open and expansive, that I think it would just, it would make, it would make the house much more user-friendly, much, you know, we call it articulation, but it would basically break, break the house down into a little bit more human scale. So, would you be amenable to, to that, where, you know, like I, like I think we're, the foam costs are, I think, about $2.50 a linear foot?
Well, it, it sounds like, as I understand, some type of architectural treatment that would give it some differentiation between the houses, at the, at the line of those houses. Is that what you're trying to...
No, actually, it'd be horizontal.
Well, I know, but at the, it would start, or you want, are you expecting it to all the way down, both?
Well, I would see it on the, the, the proposed addition, the proposed house.
Uh-huh.
So, back to the, back to the new garage, back to the existing garage.
Yeah.
So, so it would be on the, on the south, and I guess that's the, the west elevation, the street-side elevation.
Okay.
So, just on those two elevations, you know, that's my thoughts, I'd have to see what the commission...
I think one thing about what Commissioner Luer was talking about is, if you look at your, your home in the back, you've got that kind of dominant horizontal because of the upper level porch structure.
Right.
And if you brought this detail down, the Commissioner Luer was talking about, you'd get kind of a horizontal down the driveway, and you'd see these horizontals kind of matching in the way that your emphasis is working, and it would help break up the kind of plain wall with the differentiated windows that doesn't provide enough differentiation to really liven the facade up a bit.
It sounds, if I may restate what you're saying, it sounds like you're just, you're talking about an architectural, basically a design feature, basically a design feature that, that changes... that changes slightly the design that I have, because my design is pretty basic in so many ways. I mean, it's so...
I think a lot of times today, what you see are people using that technique out of a thin stone veneer. I don't particularly care for that.
Right. That's another option, right?
That's something, he's just talking about something, you're already going to have a stucco artisan out there. This is just something that they know how to take that foam and attach it, and then because you're going over it, you get an articulation on the side that's a little bit of a, it just breaks up the mass.
And you get a shadow line, you know, so the shadow line helps out a lot. So I think, you know, last time I priced them out there about $250 linear foot, and your stucco contractor can put it on right with, you know, right with the, when he does the color coat. So it's really not a, it's not a high-tech thing. It's not even a very expensive thing, but it would give you, would give a lot of, a lot more life to that facade.
Is this something that you would need to see to approve?
I don't think so.
No, just the idea that you're requesting? Is this a request or a requirement? I mean...
That's, I think that we would, we would need to discuss that.
Condition the project if that's what you want.
Yeah, we could condition the project as such.
Subject to my approval.
Right. And it could be approved with staff, and it could, as long as it's shown on the building plans and, you know, is, it would just be, would be inspected at final inspection.
I don't think what you're asking is unreasonable. I mean, if you feel like it would make the project more visually pleasing, I guess is what you're saying, and not impact my, basically the way it's designed, function.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll bring that one back to the commission. How do you guys feel about that?
Jerry, I want to just make sure I'm clear on it. Okay, you're talking about bringing, like, just below the window line, a, something about maybe a width of a two-by-four, right? Coming across.
Yeah.
And then it's going to go all the way down the side, right?
Right.
On the south side?
Right.
Also on the north side then?
I don't think it's, I don't, I wouldn't, it could, but I'm not going to worry about the north side because I think that's going to be, you know, there's fences there and there's also adjacent. I'm more worried about the exposed driveway.
Just, so it's basically just the front and then the side up to...
Up to where the garage goes.
All the way down?
Right.
Okay, so when this window elevation changes, how would that be handled?
It would, it would fit under, it would fit at the lowest window.
Oh, so you'd bring it out to the lowest window all the way down?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. I understand.
Okay.
So Jerry, you're talking about essentially a band.
Yeah.
They're actually called belly bands.
You could not go all the way down to where the wall meets the car.
Microphone?
We're not talking about some sort of projection that goes out at the lower part of the window height and goes all the way down to the...
No.
Just a band.
We're just talking about a horizontal element.
Yeah, I would certainly support that at a minimum, yeah.
Okay. Michael? Okay, so I think, I think we're about four to one here on that. So I think, do we need to condition the project for that? It seems like a minor thing, but...
So yes, it would need to be, you would add it as planning condition eight, and it would be that the applicant shall redesign the west and south elevations to include a belly band.
Okay.
Subject to... If I may.
Yeah.
Review and approval by the director. If I may, I'm not in favor of it for a couple of reasons. That foam is very cheap. It's very brittle. Over time, it looks poor. You're going to use a corner bead on top and bottom and it's, it just doesn't look good over time. If we were going to do something, I'd be more in favor of maybe articulating the windows on one unit versus another, or, you know, differentiating in a different way. And obviously, I wouldn't withhold my vote because of this, but if I were, if I were offering opinions, that's what I would offer.
Okay, that's valid.
Jesse, just so I'm clear on what you're saying, are you talking about like something like a bay window type thing?
No.
Well, just something to, I mean, I get what, I get what they're saying. I got, you know, Commissioner Lucas and Commissioner Jerry.
Commissioner Jerry.
So I mean, I get that, we kind of want to make these units look different or look to differentiate between them. And I agree, I just don't know that I would agree on a belly band. I just don't like them.
Yeah. And, you know, they can be done right and they can be done poorly. So it's a matter of, you know, the old, us old timers used to do it with two two-by-fours, you set one two-by-four on an angle with a, with a two-by-four underneath, and then you come with a, you know, the corner beads and that stucco it on all three courses, but...
Well, I've seen also where you have like, you know, two corbels and somewhat of a faux like window seal that you would, that Grandma would put her pies on kind of thing. And those, you know, that's a different look, but anyway, I digress.
I think what we're all saying is I think we need, we need more articulation. So are you, is most, most everybody comfortable with the belly band, or do we just want to leave it, leave it up to staff to require more articulation?
Belly band or other...
Okay. I would, I would go with that.
I didn't hear that. What was that?
Yeah.
Belly band or other architectural articulation.
I just want to express a thought. We're really conscious of not, at least I am, I'm speaking for myself, but we're conscious of not burdening you with additional expenses unnecessarily because we appreciate that you're doing something to create more rental property in the city. On the other hand, we have these guidelines in place, so we have to make sure that our sensitivity to your needs are an oversight of, you know, our responsibility to these guidelines. So having heard, you know, Commissioner Jesse, I'm not, I'm not sure that that simple band, you know, especially if it isn't, you know, very strong, is really meeting, you know, our guideline responsibility.
And I'm comfortable leaving it as, you know, at the discretion of the development director, you know. So what we're, I think what we're all trying to do, say is I think we just need, we're in favor of the project, we just need a little bit more articulation, you know, on those two facades.
If I can say something, if we have a ballroom dancer of an applicant, I'm sure she's going to want to weigh in on this, and I'm sure she's probably going to come up with something very, very pleasant. So I would say let's, let's let her weigh in on this and...
She's happy the way she played it.
Hey, can I ask you something, Scott? Is there, would, like a outdoor flower trough kind of work?
I mean, there's a lot of things they could do, and I think we'll sit down with the applicant and I'll go over and I'll pull out a handful of items that, I mean, because you can do a lot of things. You could change the way the windows are designed and have inset windows. Those look really nice. And add a lot of articulation to shadow lines. There's different things that you can do with it. You can take where the second unit comes back in, and you don't even have to change the location of it. You can float the wall out, and that creates a shadow line and a delineation between the two. So there's different things that can be done. I, you know, there's like a handful of things that we'll sit down and offer up to them if the belly band is not where they want to pursue. And so I just, that's what I would say. I mean, there's lots, there's lots of different things you can add to it to create articulation on that elevation.
Yeah, right now it's just a blank slate. So, you know, they could, they could wrap the windows, you know, with detail. They could, they could do just, you know, you know, they might even be able to just do something at the more articulated sill at each of the windows, you know, something just to create more shadow line, something just to create more articulation. So it's not such a flat facade. I think that's all we're trying to get at. So I'm comfortable with that.
The one thing I'd throw out is you've got the front door to the studio next to the bathroom wall and the bedroom wall. If you just pushed the entrance in six or eight inches, you'd get this shadow box around the entrance. I think would really give you a dramatic vertical slice down there that keeps that long piece going. But I think anything that your builder can recommend as an inexpensive sill articulation, I think is the easiest thing to do. We don't want to burden you with costs. We just want to try to help the fire departments access. I don't know what they're driving. That's a big problem.
Yeah. It's, okay, I'll have that. I'll save my fire department comments for later. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number PC 1918, CrossFit Development Permit CPO 571 and Conditional Use Permit UPO 517 for two new residential dwelling units at 5570 King Street with the addition of a condition number eight.
Planning condition eight, yes.
Planning condition eight for articulation detail at the discretion of the community development director.
Okay, wait, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Just one item that I just noticed was that we have a 5570 Kings Avenue, and then we've got a 570 Kings Avenue, which is the corrected address.
Sorry for my heavy fingers. It is 570.
Okay. Okay, I think we need to change that in the resolution.
Will do, yes, sir.
Okay. Otherwise, it'd be built on their own laws. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, can you call the vote?
Commissioner Sadowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Barone.
Hi.
Commissioner Lucas.
Hi.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
Hi.
And Chairman Luer.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Good job. Thank you.
Don't worry about it. Okay. Item C is new business, and we have none. Item, item D is unfinished, finished business, and that's D1. We have planned Morro Bay. I think we've seen this before.
Yeah, we're going to sort of continue on with Module Three, Module Three being the use section of the zoning code. It's been on the agenda for the last couple of meetings. Well, with the exception of Panorama. And, but we talked to one piece of the item, and that would be the vacation rental portion of it. So you won't see it, you know, modified beyond what you've done and we've put on the website at this point. So, but we will go through the rest of the uses that are in here, go section by section, and Martha has a presentation for it.
Well, she's setting up. As far as the vacation rental, we've gotten a lot of, I've gotten a lot of correspondence on that. So where, what is the thinking on that so far?
So we had the, we had the forum on the 20th. We had about 110 folks attend. We had 48 speakers. I put together a synopsis of that. Commissioner Ingraffia graced us with his presence at the meeting. And so, and I've, the synopsis is before, is in the hands of our two city council members that were the sponsors of that meeting, Mr. Heding and Ms. McPherson. Unfortunately, Ms. McPherson was unable to attend, and so the meeting was led by John Heding. And once I have the opportunity to sit down with both of them, probably release that synopsis, assuming I get concurrence from him that that accurately reflects the input that we received at the meeting. And so you'll be able to see that, and then we might be able to bring forward some proposed changes based on input there. So that's the way I see it happening, and that'll probably happen in August.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Over the weekend, I ran into a friend of mine, and we were talking about this, and he's another part of the state. And we were talking about the complexity of trying to regulate that and burdening the community development office and all that. And he's a smart guy, and he said, well, maybe you could devise some kind of a point system that would make things a lot more concrete and easy to calculate. And on first hearing that, I really liked the idea. That kind of makes sense. Now, I've been thinking about it, to be honest. I haven't come up with anything that I like in the way of a point system. I'm just sort of throwing this out so that maybe other people could think about it too. And, you know, maybe we could, you get certain points, and then if, however you, where your property is situated and the size of it perhaps, and then perhaps the rentals and duration somehow subtract from the points, and somehow it just gets to be kind of an easier calculation. I don't know. I just thought I'd throw that out.
I don't know. I've not seen a system that works like that. I don't know, Martha? So I don't know. I don't really have an idea about how that would work.
You know what, I can...
Yeah. I will note that between that meeting and on the 20th and today, I have, I had the opportunity to sit down with one of the firms that does the research into them, you know, identifies the law-permitted ones and gotten some costing on that, which seems pretty reasonable. We probably would just up the fee for the vacation rentals that they have to pay every year to renew, cover the cost of the service. It was pretty reasonable. It's about $12,000 a year. And it's a website, you know, based application that you can go on to, and it's updated weekly. So it seemed pretty reasonable, a pretty inexpensive way to at least do the enforcement part of it, which was one of the concerns that was noted at the meeting that we had. At least, I think that was the component of it because we don't get complaints about vacation rentals, so I don't assume it's the other. I assume it's the, we have unlicensed ones and we need to be regulating those. So at least to that, to that end, you know, I've done some research on that and have some ideas about that. And then they even have a service for another $5,000 that's, that give you some vetting opportunity as it relates to the amount of TOT being paid versus the amount of days that the unit is offered for rent, to see if you're sort of, you know, hitting the 80%, you know, metric for most of the ones that are available on the market for this long, you know, remit this much TOT in the area. And so if you have something that's way low, then you would know that, hey, maybe they're not remitting the appropriate amount as opposed to doing audit of vacation rentals every year because that's time-consuming and inexpensive, and it's a lot of extra work for the finance department. So it seemed like a pretty, you know, just a slight addition to that fee, you know, we could, we have the money to do both of those things, which I thought, at least on the enforcement side of things, could work. So I am looking, you know, at opportunities to improve the system and bring that back to you.
Real quick, Scott, you know, I didn't make that forum, but when we had this discussion, I mentioned that from an infrastructure standpoint, you know, we, when there's vacation rentals, because my experience in Cayuga, which we had like a 40%, you know, there's a surcharge of use on the local infrastructure with water and sewer. Was there any discussion about maybe having a special water and sewer rate that might be a higher surcharge for vacation rentals in that discussion at the forum?
There wasn't. I mean, it's something that could happen, although I would note that, you know, based on the input provided by the planning commission, the occupancy, you know, has been reduced quite a bit. What you can have, and then basically it's two people per bedroom. You know, we know most of the houses in town are, you know, five and six-bedroom houses. They're two and three-bedroom houses. So the spike that you talk about becomes less of an issue if we're allowing less folks in there, and we're not, and that's all-inclusive, the numbers that you gave me. I mean, meaning, God, it's children and everything. So if it stays along those lines, I think that issue is somewhat reduced. If we were to back away from that, then I think maybe that's, you know, not a bad avenue to look at from a, from a fee standpoint.
So in your opinion, what we've kind of, like with the amount of usage, it's kind of mitigating that kind of...
Yes, correct, absolutely. I think, I think you've addressed that, that issue that you would have with that otherwise. Yeah.
Jesse, did you have something?
It just occurred to me as Commissioner Ingraffia was talking about his point system, that similar mechanisms, I guess, would be, have been used like in the cannabis dispensary type of discussion, when, you know, when they're discussing how to, how to vet dispensaries and beauty contests kind of thing. And I think that's what you were getting at, is really kind of that. And I don't really have an opinion.
I'm actually in the process of doing that right now for cannabis businesses since we started taking applications yesterday.
Oh, so how many have we received?
Well, I only know of one. We have one. I know we're probably going to get at least five. But I don't know if anybody else came in because we were in here at three.
Okay, okay.
I wanted to have one brief comment about the number and tenor of the emails received about the vacation ordinance. And all I can say is there's a huge amount of misinformation being given to people. The number of comments that have... The number of comments that have responded to things that, to my understanding, are not on the table are amazing. And the idea that we should somehow hold, we're already holding, by what I remember in the ordinance, we're already allowing more parking that's not the way we would allow for parking with a regular residence. You know, normally we would say you have to cover it or enclose. And we're allowing the parking on the site now. I think it's very generous and the people responding to some of those issues, I think, are, they, they've really got to understand these impacts better, I think.
Certainly, like I said, we're going to tee this back up for you to have that discussion in the future moving forward, so. Are we ready to jump into the Module Three?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We're back to really discussing Module Three, which is the use regulations. This is the third of four modules of the preliminary draft regulations that, once we go through this process and revise them, put them together into the full draft zoning code and take a look at that again altogether. So for the use regulations, really start with first the definition of the uses or the use classifications. And that's included in the latter part of Module Three. And really because once this, the ordinance is put together, that's really a reference section. And so what this has is the definition of all the land uses allowed in the code and it's a big update to what you have currently because you don't have a comprehensive list of all the uses right now and there isn't definitions for all of the uses identified in your code. So many existing uses in the code have been redefined, renamed, to make sure everything in fact does have a definition. In some cases, there's new uses and there's consolidation of long lists of use allowances right now that currently are kind of zone by zone. And then overall, the approach with the use classifications is to try and be a little more broad. So classifying uses by common characteristics, functions, so on, so that you don't find yourself constantly having to list every specific new use. You know, when we look at some of these old codes and department store is treated different than a bookstore, which is treated different than a stationery store and so on. But we can never quite keep up with all those types of uses. So it's really about a more modern classification system, again, having broader categories so as new or unanticipated uses come up, they can fit into those definitions or those classifications of uses. There are, you know, these broader groups are broken down into subclassifications, particularly where there's certain types of uses within that that warrant different treatments or different regulations. So that's the first part, all of the land uses are defined. The second part is then, within each of the districts, use allowances are identified. So it's, for each one of those uses, whether it is permitted, require a discretionary permit, or it's not allowed in each district. So for every one of the agriculture, residential, commercial, mixed use, industrial, public and semi-public, and then the waterfront and harbor area districts. So within all of these, the use allowances have been updated to really reflect the direction in your general plan and the local coastal plan, the Plan Moro Bay, as well as state and federal law. So for the majority of the districts, the use allowances are presented in tables. And again, there's identified whether a use is permitted, minor use permit is required, a conditional use permit is required, or if the use is not allowed. Then there's also cross references to specific standards that some uses have that apply to that use regardless of what district it's in. I would say the anomaly is the waterfront and harbor area district because those are such unique kind of districts which have unique considerations. For those districts, to the, you know, greatest extent, the existing provisions are carried forward with some cleanup of language that we discussed with the G-PAC, just of how things were unclear. And then this will also be updated to reflect the discussions the Planning Commission and the Harbor Board is having. So I mentioned that there's some uses that have specific standards that are applicable to them and that's really that next big section, where the standard for specific uses. And so it addresses specific characteristics or compatibility issues for those uses, again, regardless of what district they're located in. And each of these uses, either there's some that are carried forward, existing standards, some there are just all new standards were included. And then in some cases, there were standards already in your code and then these were revised. So I'll go through a quick summary for each of those. The ones that really have existing standards carried forward are play housing and single room occupancy. These have, to some extent, some state provisions that apply to it, also your housing element as well. So these really are ones that were fairly recent and had clear policy direction that, so the standards weren't changed. The next set is things with revised standards. So accessory dwelling units is where revised to be consistent with changes in state law. Animal keeping, for the most parts, provisions carried forward with, including new provisions for beekeeping. In daycare, there's new provisions for hours of operation, which can be additional considerations with a minor use permit and then requiring a pickup and drop off plan. Emergency shelters was revised, but not to change the intent of the regulations or the topics that were addressed, but to include quantifiable and measurable standards, whereas right now there's some terms like appropriate or things that were difficult to interpret. So we looked at incorporating hard standards for that. Home occupations, updated to be consistent with state law and cottage foods. There's also, as we discussed with the G-PAC on this, a new allowance to allow one employee on site with that home occupation to allow some flexibility, whereas right now the current code says only some, a resident of the home can work with that home occupation. And the next section on non-permanent vendors, so this section has been revised and expanded to address more things, so food and consumer products. So right now, your non-permanent vendor has a real narrow definition of that, it just allows flower and balloon vending. So this was broadened and then there's new operational and locational provisions. And this also allowed, those standards could be modified through a modification process. So there's set standards, but then there is an allowance for consideration to vary those if, if the review authority finds it appropriate. For outdoor dining and seating, this really clarifies the provisions for hours of operation, location, it has noise litter and parking. And overall, areas less than 350 square feet are allowed, that's really seen as an accessory. Anything between 350 and 1,000 square feet requires minor use permit approval because as you get bigger, there may be some more need for consideration. And then areas over 1,000 square feet require conditional use permit approval. Outdoor displays and sales, there's some revisions to this. Produce displays up to 125 square feet and live plant displays up to 600 square feet are allowed versus requiring a minor use permit currently. And then a conditional use permit is required for larger areas. So again, allowing that opportunity with discretion. For personal services, there's new limitations on hours of operation, locational limitations for fortune, palm and card readers. This was discussed a little, or questions were raised at G-PAC on this and that tattoo parlors are also included under personal services. And the current code has a 100-foot separation requirement for, you know, between tattoo parlors. So in the draft standards, this was expanded to have that same type of limitation for fortune tellers. And then the G-PAC just really questioned whether that was for either of these uses necessary. And I don't think there was any resolution, but just kind of a question brought up that your commission could consider. The next set is the uses that are new standards have been incorporated for them. So automobile and vehicle sales and service establishments for the sales and leasing activities, washing service stations have some setback landscaping and so on. Drive-through facilities, there are standards for drive aisles, landscaping, pedestrian walkways, requiring a circulation plan. And these are the standards that are just per the code. Through a discretionary process, again, there could be either different or additional standards for some of these. Self-storage, standards requiring exterior wall treatments and design, screening, fencing. Recharging stations, this is really a clarifying standard that charging stations are allowed in all parking areas. So it's just really to make sure that that's, you know, there's no problem in putting those kind of accessory quote-unquote structures in. Recycling facilities, there's locational screening, design requirements depending on the type of recycling facility. Short-term vacation rentals, we have discussed and we discussed earlier tonight. Solar energy systems, there is heightened setback requirements for ground and roof-mounted systems. Telecommunication facilities, the existing provisions for satellite dishes are carried forward and then there's new provisions for telecommunication facilities, so the wireless cellular facilities. And then finally, urban agriculture, this is a new section. When we started this project and talked with stakeholders and others in the community, there is interest in urban agriculture type uses. So there's provision for community and market gardens, private gardens, urban agriculture stands. So there's standards for hours of operation, structures, maintenance, parking. And then one use that actually didn't get into the slides, there's also standards in for farmers markets as well. So this is farmers markets that are on private property versus any that would occur within your right of way or on, on public property. So that's a summary of the use regulations in Module Three and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we want to go through this on chapter by chapter, basically page by page?
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's what you want to do, go chapter by chapter and, yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at Chapter 17.04, the agricultural district. Let's do, let's go through the introduction first. I've got a couple of questions that may answer questions later. As far as solar energy systems, can we basically rename that to like renewable energy systems? There's going to be so many new, new technologies that are coming online from everything from fuel cells to battery storages to, you know, kinetic storage to hydro storage, you know, that, that systems are going to be out there to help balance and condition the grid that I'm not sure we're going to catch all that with, with just solar, solar systems also. What are we talking about as far as wind, wind generation, small scale wind generation or? Yeah, let's.
If I might offer an opinion, I think from my, from where I sit, rather than try to be forward thinking, well, we want to be forward thinking, but.
We want to be thinking.
We don't want to be, we don't want to be guessing as to what sort of renewable energy sources we might be, we might be implementing in the future. And it's, we can always amend the general plan as necessary for future technologies, right, Scott?
Certainly you can always amend the code, not an issue. I think what Charlie was really just getting at is to make it a little broader, you know, more encompassing of other technologies. I mean, it, I have to look back at the specific section to make sure that makes sense because I'm not sure some of the standards in there make sense more. Yeah, so I mean, so it would, it would cause some changes to that section because really it's pointed at solar.
Yeah, and we're talking about setbacks, we're talking about height limitations, we're talking, you know, some of these are going to need noise, you know, noise standards involved with them or some. So I'm just concerned that we're not going to lock out, you know, the, the future, you know, micro grid technology where we can, where we can take advantage of even community energy systems and, and, you know, separating the grid into quadrants that we handle ourselves, so.
You know, but we have to be careful because there's, you know, if we, like for instance, open it up and make it a little too broad, like for wind, you know, we're a bird migratory area here, we, when you introduce wind, you have noise issues and, and other matters. So by leaving it solar, it's like more of a passive way of dealing with it, right? And then you're just talking about storage of the energy that's being generated possibly.
Well, I'm talking about there are several systems out there that, you know, are, are regenerative systems, you know, that, that could be allowed where they, where, you know, where, where you have battery storage systems, where they take energy when it's, when it's, there's a surplus on the grid rather than shunting it to a ground. You know, they'll store, store that and they'll, they'll reuse it for peak shaving or. So what I'd like to get is I'd like to, rather than just get a solar, I'd like to get something that would be, be able to be reviewed and be changed as each technology comes forward because there's, this is a, you know, we're on the, you know, the forefront of a massive changes in how energy is going to be transported, you know, produced and used.
I would agree with Richard. I think opening the door for wind, especially in an urban environment, would probably be something we want to not be too inclusive of. I mean, obviously in certain situations, maybe, but battery storage, we would typically, I think, want to have indoors and not outdoors, so therefore not, not, you know, subject to these zoning standards.
You know, because one of the things that comes to mind, what you're talking about, Jerry, is, is the technology, and I can't remember the acronym, but basically it's a solar array that use, puts in railway cars and they basically generate, they move these railway cars up and down a sloped area and then when it comes down.
Connected storage.
Storages. So is that kind of what you're talking about? Because that would take more than just a.
Well, what I'm saying is, I think, you know, this is fine for the solar, but I think we need to, we need to have a clause for future technologies as they become available that they can be reviewed on a case-by-case basis so that we're not, we're not precluding them, but we're not also giving them free rein. I don't, you know, I don't want to set up wind farms in a migratory patterns or set up a, you know, set up a, you know, a wind tower next to, you know, on top of a residence or top of a, you know, a, you know, a, you know, seashells or something. But I, this almost seems like we're precluding a lot of the technologies that are on the verge right now of becoming profitable and feasible.
So I would say I don't know how it actually precludes anything. It just provides a standard for solar because it's something we deal with every day. I get applications that come in the front counter for solar weekly. So it deals with that one issue. Things that aren't necessarily addressed in here can be dealt with on individual permitting processes for site plan reviews, things like that, you know, that we're not thinking about. We had the flexibility in the code to permit those things, so it's not an issue. The only time that it might be is if the technology required something that was, that was, you know, say it had to be something taller than was allowed in the zone. Well, that's an issue and that's a, that's a situation where you probably would be looking at amending the code and going through this process because do we want to do that?
Right.
Maybe we do, maybe we don't. Maybe we only want it in certain locations if it's going to have to be a certain height that we don't allow in a certain zone. So we have a permitting process that accounts for things that aren't specifically identified in here. We have things that are specifically identified in here that are, that happen frequently in cities. That's what, that's what we're doing. So I don't think there's anything here that would stop us from doing this. I'd let Martha weigh in and, you know, give her two cents on this as well.
Yeah, actually, I was just going to say that. So if the other systems that you're talking about meet all the other requirements or allowance of the code, that's, they could happen. This is just specifically identifying for solar energy, the unique needs, I would say.
Okay, so specifically what I, what I could see, you know, is, is a hydrokinetic storage system right now. We, you know, if the wind farm, you know, if there's the wind farm that gets put offshore, you know, it's not all, all that wind generation capacity is not going to be used all at once or not, probably not the same time it's going to be generated. Well, there's an old tank farm from the power plant that's up on the, up on the ridge, and there's a 30-inch pipeline between the two. So, you know, that's not an allowed use. I don't know if it would be easy to permit through this system because it isn't allowed in the ag system. So can we just have something in there say that future energy technologies or future utility technologies, something like that, you know, can be reviewed and are, are encouraged and can be reviewed on a case-by-case basis?
Right, so there could be kind of a blanket allowance that other renewable energy systems beyond this, you know, standards in this code could be considered through a conditional use permit.
Yep, that would be great.
And then that would go, those kind of things would go before Planning Commission?
All conditionally used permits.
Right.
All conditionally used permits reviewed by the plan.
Okay.
I guess my biggest concern is that the, the issue of height here, as much as I'm advocating that we have more things like solar, there's a big difference between a solar array on a roof that tends to hug the roof and then one that starts tracking the sun, and then that's slightly different than if you're saying solar energy also extends to solar hot water heating where you've got plumbing pieces exposed and things like that. I'm actually kind of uncomfortable with five feet above the maximum height because that's a, that's a significant, that's a significant viewshed issue to me, and I'm uncomfortable with that. I, I love a well-done, high-technology, alternate technology, even low-technology if we have people going there, but I don't like the idea that we're giving carte blanche to five feet above the roof. I, one of my biggest concerns is that we're still allowing satellite dishes anywhere. Somebody's gone up to their maximum height and then they're putting another satellite dish on top of that, and even though they're smaller than they used to be, to me, that's a, that's a real eyesore. And, and so the five-foot thing scares me in the height that's in there, 17, 10, 240.
Okay, I think we'll get to that.
Okay.
I think we're, I was stuck on the introduction.
Okay.
So any, anything else on the introduction?
I did have a question on the, on the home occupation and the allowing an employee, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but would accessibility be triggered by the inclusion of an employee in a home occupation type of situation?
So it's, that's a, that's a good question, and I think the answer to it sort of depends. But it could, yes. It's, I've looked in a couple of different ordinances because it's kind of popped into my head when we put it in here, and I've seen some ordinances that, you know, have a reference to that and then others that don't. So I'm not entirely clear, needs probably a answer from our city attorney's office.
That's a good point.
It's a, one of my list of things to look up.
And Scott, also on non-permitted vendors, if we're looking at page number three, where does the, the food truck question come in?
That includes food trucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
The tattoo thing, I wasn't clear what we were trying to say there. Is there a 100-foot buffer and we're trying to get rid of it?
No, it's actually carried forward. There's an existing one, but the G-PAC just asked, you know, that seems maybe not necessary.
I would agree. That seems probably not necessary.
Yeah, I'd take the other side on that. I just...
Well, I've been on a lot of military bases.
Yeah.
You clump them together.
Cluster them, then watch them. So do we have a, seeing as that's a, you know, that's a question here, does anybody else want to chime in on that, yea or nay? Joseph?
And was it, was it the question also whether we wanted to add in those other palm reader?
I would like to remove restrictions.
Whatever.
What was that? I would like to remove restrictions on, I mean, there's one, for example, there's one right there on Morro Bay Boulevard in Shasta, I think it is. You know, if somebody wanted to pop one two doors down, I don't think I would be opposed to that, so, and, you know, I mean, maybe in the minority here, but that's my opinion.
I need others to weigh in.
Yep, Joseph?
We're talking about topics, please weigh in every time, all of you.
Yeah, yeah, in, in reality, it's probably not much of an issue on Morro Bay. You know, the optics of deciding that we could have tattoo parlors next door to each other or numerous ones in a block doesn't sound good. I would be in favor, I think, of keeping the current ordinance and, and waiting to see if it ever, if it became relevant to change it, I think, just because of the optics of it. Then Michael?
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Jesse. I'm fairly libertarian on, on the use of, I wouldn't want to see it as accessory use moving into the home business. I think that, that's, that's an issue. But I, I, I think it's a, I don't want to be an aegis here, but I think there might be a generational issue on this one too that I've got to be sensitive to. I've got all the original equipment, but I know that many of my children's generation in their 30s are very different about the attitude, so I don't want to, I think I may have to pump that to another session, but I'd be, I'd open it up.
Richard?
Just to be clear, we're talking about this 100-foot thing from residence?
What?
No, we're talking about...
From one another.
From one another?
Yeah.
The, the, one of the ones that, okay, the thing I'm a little bit concerned, it's like, you know, my, my, both my daughters are tattooed, but, but away from schools maybe, you know, that might, you know, I don't know how we can do that, but there's, if it's possible, you know, because there's like, you know, I, I, just a little concerned, it's like, I understand the, you know, the, whatever reason for somebody, but not so much from each other, but from like, like a, not maybe from a school, you know.
Yeah, so for tattoo parlors, the current requirement is that they have to be located a minimum of 100 feet from another tattoo parlor or a sensitive use, which includes a school. So what's included here is, is that plus that same location limitation for fortune palm and card readers. So I'm hearing that maybe for both of those, take away the 100 feet from each other, but keep the 100 feet from sensitive uses.
Yeah, I, I, that'd be cool.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can, I can hear the comments and see the emails about changing the peculiar or particular culture of Morro Bay, and even though we're not intending to do that because this is largely a hypothetical situation that in all likelihood will never arise in the future, it does appear that way. So I should say, I would say just don't change it if the circumstances require it be changed.
Yeah, I, I would follow on that. My ageism is showing, you know, but I would, I would say that 100, 100-foot separation, that's not an undue burden, and if, if it is an undue burden for someone, they can always come in for a minor use permit or a CUP, you know, to, to see if they can amend that in a particular use. So I would keep, I'm for keeping 100-foot separation, but I think I'm being overruled here.
So yeah, I mean, I'm counting three of you saying no 100 feet, keep the remainder of it.
I'll take that if I can get it.
Okay.
All right, that's what we're moving with.
Okay.
Peak hour.
So, yeah. So that, anything else on the introduction? Anybody else want to chime in on that? Okay, then moving forward, we got Chapter 17.04. Richard, do you have anything on that?
17.04?
17.04, page number five. So this is the agricultural district?
Okay.
We can start. Joseph, did you have anything on the ag district? Michael? Jesse? Okay, I think I, Richard?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything outside that.
Okay.
Oh, wait.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just a little curious about this, what triggered the beekeeping thing?
And the beekeeping, that was, again, comments related to urban agriculture and, you know, wanting to support that, an interest in, in urban agricultural-type uses.
Okay, is, is that?
Oh, sorry about that. With, because with regards to that, is that, are you correlating that with some of the telecommunication issues? Like, would that have an effect on it? Like if you put a cell tower near, is it going to have a restriction is what I guess what I'm saying?
So a cell tower near where beehives are?
Yeah, like near the...
Not that I know of, and I haven't come across really that at all.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question on employee housing. You know, seeing as we're in an ag district, it's, we've left that to be determined. So, you know, one of the big, one of the big concerns right now is, is farm, you know, agricultural farm, farm housing.
Right, so actually that TBD is just for the section number. So the section on employee housing is on page 45, and that does have the allowances for accommodations where agriculture uses are allowed. And that's consistent with state law and your housing element.
I do have one question. Is this where it would be appropriate to place something about restrictions on, on chemical types or, or treatments? I'm a little concerned with our eventual, hopefully, reliance on groundwater, that if we start introducing, you know, chemicals into the agricultural component that then get into our groundwater, and new ones are being made all the time, so I don't know how to, is this appropriate for that or is that yet another mechanism to watch how that's done?
Yeah, we wouldn't regulate agricultural operations that way through the zoning code.
Sure.
And there, and there is regulations in place through the regional board for agricultural operations.
Well, the FDA has...
And FDA, correct. I mean, there's, they're regulated by several.
Yeah.
I do have a question. I remember at the, one of the G-PAC, one of the G-PAC meetings, the issue came up of changing agricultural zoning to something else based on it no longer being feasible to conduct agricultural activities. Does that, is this the appropriate place to ask that question or does that fit somewhere else in that module?
So the process for changing agricultural zoning to something else would be through a general plan amendment and your local coastal, well, and your zoning and local coastal plan. One of the considerations would be everything having in the coastal act as one of them as well as policies in your general plan as far as when do agriculture lands stay designated agriculture or not. So the process was in Module One, but all of the considerations that would need to be made are in your general plan and your local coastal plan.
So then, so what, an agreed-upon definition of feasibility would be, I should look elsewhere to find that definition?
Right, and it's really not going to, it's more than just the feasibility of it, it's looking at the whole of the policy direction that is set out.
Well, my, my question was fairly specific. I wanted to make sure that feasibility didn't delver into notions of, of economic feasibility, meaning, and I think I used the example of where somebody decided not to continue to invest in the farm with updating equipment or had been a spendthrift and mortgaged the property so that from a profit and loss standpoint, it was no longer feasible to carry out an agricultural business there, but somebody knew how to farm, it would still be very feasible, and I didn't want that kind of an argument to be used to change the zoning into something that would sacrifice agricultural land. So I guess it goes somewhere else.
You know, and also along with that is what about the subdivision of existing parcels in the ag zone so that as they become smaller and smaller, they become less feasible?
Well, and the development standards we, for the ag zone, which includes the minimum parcel size and the density, was in Module Two in the, the development standard, so we'd have to look back at that. But that did establish the minimum parcel size, which was consistent, was it 20 acres? I forget what it was, but it was consistent with your current standards. The, there's also, and anytime you're dealing with agricultural land in the coastal zone, there's a whole slew of policies in coastal act items that apply to it that really is something to navigate.
We maintain the same requirements in the agricultural zone as we currently have in the code, and there are 20-acre minimums between Little Moro Creek Road and Moro Creek and then 40 acres or more. It's unclear how this is worded here.
Yeah, and so what I'm concerned about is somebody subdividing that to the point where they're not feasible anymore, and so...
Well, there's, there's, I mean, so agricultural land is, you know, identified and has classifications on it like prime ag land, and we have an LCP that says you can't convert prime ag land. So without coming through a lot of hoops, and then you have to get certification for any change like that through the Coastal Commission, so it's not going to, I mean, it's really not a concern.
Okay.
It would be very difficult to do anything like that, and most of the area that is prime ag land that's within the city is either prime ag land or prime ag land if irrigated. And so again, those things are difficult to convert.
Okay. Okay, then moving on to Chapter 17.05, residential districts, we have RL, RS, RM, and RH that we're converting to. So one of the things that, one of the emails came forward was that because of the sliding scale on some of these classifications, that, that, it was, I think it was Betty Winholz said, there should be a hard number, R, you know, I don't remember right off the top, but it's, you know, RS shouldn't be from 630, 6,300 square feet to 4,500 square feet, it should be one number or another, and then each class, I would kind of differ on that because you'll have slope variables on that, so...
So the densities are set by the land use map, okay? So these are, these are, these are, these are the zoning classifications, and they implement the land use classifications in the draft land use map, which G-PAC, Planning Commission, and City Council have all said, yes, good, we have a draft one now, this is implementing that.
Okay.
So anything you do now would change, would be changing now, and we have to go back to City Council, say, do you want us to change that?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
There might have been a, and that might be, I can, might be some confusion, you know, for Betty on that, I'm not sure, and maybe after I get a chance to look through her comments, since we didn't get them until about 11 today, I'll, I'll reach back out to her and get some clarification about what the issue is. I'm happy to do that, I, you know, I'll follow up with her.
Part of this process is we're going back and forth, and we're implementing stuff that we've already decided on earlier, so I think there's going to be, we're going to have to keep it flexible that if something comes up that we, that we see that we understand now that we didn't understand earlier, that we still need to go back and...
Right, I would just also clarify, I think what she's looking at is the purpose statements, which the purpose statements do have those ranges because those do reflect the general plan, but again, the density... But again, the density for each, in each of these districts was discussed in module two, which is the development standard. So if, just a reminder, we looked at density, parcel size, setbacks, heights.
Well, and as I understand her comment, she was saying you'd almost be mandated to have 11 units in a medium dense, in the RM, is that's what I understand she's saying. So, yeah, that's not always practical, depending on the lot size, so...
Yeah, you have a range because of that. Otherwise, you would be saying, if you said, no, you have to have the maximum, and you can't fit them there, then we would never get redevelopment of those properties.
Exactly.
And I'm not sure that's even what she's saying necessarily. Again, I haven't looked through this, and I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to guess as to, as to what, you know, the issues are. And I'm not going to try to review while we're sitting here doing this, but I will definitely go back and get clarification on the things that I don't understand.
Okay, any other comments on 17.05?
This is residential.
This residential, residential districts?
Yeah, I have a question, and forgive me for not having more time to flush this out better. What's the distribution, Scott, of the large family daycare center? I'm looking at the permitted within some of the single-family districts, and I'm just trying to envision a day where the home occupancy thing says, oh, I've got a small family daycare center that I'm going to put in my house next to you.
Yeah, and those things are allowed by right, basically. We don't have much discretionary authority. The only time we get discretion is if you get the large ones, then we can look at parking and circulation and drop-off areas. The small ones are allowed by state law.
Because it's permitted everywhere across the board.
That's what the state allows.
Right.
So the state allows it anywhere, but we can't, for the large ones?
Well, the large ones, while technically you could require discretionary permit, you're limited in what you can actually condition, and what happens is it really puts you in a position where you think you can make a decision on things, but the state actually limits it. So we put what you can require in, as standards, and it's permitted, because you really couldn't require anything beyond that per state law. So rather than kind of do that thing, well, oh, yes, you have discretion, but no, you actually don't, except for these very narrow areas, we just put those narrow areas in the code.
One question. So all the TBDs, what are, what are we doing with the TBDs? Animal keeping, home occupation is not going to form a uses?
So those TBDs are just section numbers, and then those, the standards for each of those are included in your packet. It's just, this is a moving kind of document as we're putting these pieces in. So, you know, TBD farmers market, farmers market, the standards for farmers markets are on page 45.
So where you have TDBs across the whole zone, does that mean we haven't, we haven't created the standards, or we just haven't created the document, the location of where that is in the document? Such as, you know, page 11, where you have animal keeping, and you see C-section, TBT, animal keeping, and it's across, all of those are across the whole zone range, so...
So, again, the TBD is just, the number is not known, but animal keeping, those standards start on page 38.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that was confusing, because you have it just on the, in the kind of the comment section, but in other areas, you've got it all across where the zone, the zones are.
Okay, and the reason for that is because those aren't uses where there, there's an allowance per district so much. So animal keeping is really depending on what type of use you have. It's not, it's permitted in RL, but minor use permit in CMU. It's just, you just need to look at that section for all of the standards on animal keeping.
Okay, I was confused by that.
Yeah, sorry.
And once you have the section references, it makes a lot more sense, because then you go look at it, and you go, oh, okay, that's why it's like this. I understand the confusion by having it done this way.
Yeah, this, we're trying to hit the moving target here, changing parameters. Okay, any other questions on...
Yeah, we're, on the residential district, a couple of them, just so I'm kind of clear, like where the group residential, is that like a halfway house? Is that what you're thinking? Where the, would be RM or an RH, and it would require a conditional use permit? Is that...
Right.
Okay, so...
So the definition for group residential is on page 72, and it does include rooming and boarding houses, dormitories.
Okay. All right, and then the other question is that transitional housing, transitional supportive housing constitute residential use? So if somebody, if you had an area that was zoned, let's say, like R4, like the old elementary school, and you wanted to do transition, that would be transitional housing, that would be something that would be...
It has to be treated like any other residential use. It can't be treated differently.
Oh, so you, you basically, then all the parking and everything requirements would be...
Again, as Martha stated, we, it's, we're implementing state law here, and so it's just good to have it in here and have it reflected correctly and accurately, so there's no question about what's happening, which can sometimes be an issue.
Yeah.
A lot of, there's a lot of things in here that we have discretion over. We don't have discretion over that. We don't have discretion over the daycare facilities. You know, those things all that you're pointing out as being interesting, might be very interesting, we just don't have much we can say about it, other than making sure we have the state law policy in here, so it's accurate, and we know what they can and can't do, and what the requirement is, and what they can and can't be, and that type of thing.
Okay, okay, I'm kind of getting churched here on a little bit on how, yeah.
The state weighs in on a lot of things. I mean, you know, the, as Martha indicated, we updated the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit section, to reflect all of the changes that have been in state law. We have more of them coming down the pike. So about the time we'll get this implemented, we'll probably get the whole next wave of them, and we'll have to go through the update process again.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, just one more thing. I have the telecommunication facilities, okay? You know, we've, it's under, it has a TBD facility, or, you remember we talked about this, Scott, about getting a map and, you know, blah, 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 and then, you know, how we're going to, is that something that we're still TBD in it and not, or...
I mean, at some point, we can go down the road and attempt to get those things. It's not always, sounds easy, but it's not always super simple. They have maps on, you know, that are out there, that are in public domain, that are not accurate.
Right.
Part of the issue becomes the sort of micro facilities that are put up, smaller ones, not accurately mapped. And I've seen, we seem to have a lot less accuracy in the mapping that's out there for City of Moro Bay than some of the other cities, and I don't know why that is. I haven't had, you know, time more recently to pick it up, but I mean, I have looked at it in the past, because that is comments that the Planning Commission has made, and so I've had staff look at it, and the stuff we've pulled up has not been correct or accurate, so I don't know why that's the case. That's the piece that we have connected the dots on.
Yeah, because, you know, you know, whenever we had this kind of issue come up, one of the concerns that I have, and, you know, people say, oh, the FCC, you know, blah, 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 this and that, but the FCC doesn't have jurisdiction over public health and safety, but that's why we're here. And so that's why I think that it's one of those things that we could maybe have a little bit more teeth in.
I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Telecommunications.
Right, but as...
Cell towers, basically.
As they relate to residential...
One of the bigger issues that's, you're new on the board, that's come, as we reviewed several of these in the past, and a lot of times, they want to be locate, they've wanted to be located in residential zones, and it's created some permitting issues.
Oh.
And so, and there's been, you know, a desire expressed on the part of the certain portions of the public, that they don't want them in residential zones, although, again, it creates issues when there's holes in the, in the coverage, and then we have to allow them, and so you can't just outright prohibit them. I mean, there's a lot of, again, federal regulations that we run into. So our ordinances have to be flexible enough to accommodate that, because if we say, no, you can't have them in the residential zone, and they go, hey, look at our map, we have a hole here, then they can have them, essentially.
Well, and the ones I've seen lately go up in the middle of these residential neighborhoods, you know, they're no bigger than a transformer, so I mean, you probably don't even realize they're there.
Yep, correct.
I mean, I've seen these go up on utility poles, I mean, they're going up on more and more utility poles, because that's where the holes are, so, and that's where we're seeing it. Well, anyway, I digress.
Okay, Joseph, you want?
Go ahead. The definition of group residential, would three unrelated senior citizen women constitute a group home?
Not necessarily. I mean, they could also, you know, be in a single unit dwelling as well.
They could. What I'm getting at is certainly not wanting to bar three women from getting together in a house in a single-family neighborhood and having a group.
Right.
And one of the concepts we're actually supporting is home share slow.
Yeah.
The city's given money to that program, and they've located folks in town here, so probably would want to make sure we're not...
So that wouldn't in any way exclude...
Well, I want to say, so you get to 13, you're in R3.1, a congregate residence at 13 residents, so I mean, up to 12, I mean, I think even in a, well, I might be overstating the fact by saying two-bedroom, but I mean, I don't think we can regulate anything under 13, right?
There's limitations, yes.
So...
Good. Okay, anything?
Yeah, just to follow up on the telecommunications thing, you know, one of the things that was being proposed in one of the last iterations was the right-of-way inside the residential zone was where they wanted to place it, and it was going to have a surround. And so would our, would our fence regulations automatically deal with anything in the front yard or right-of-way in terms of controlling aesthetics of enclosures for something like that? Because my recollection is the fence on some of these ones that they have installed in the right-of-way are taller than that.
Well, and this wouldn't affect the right-of-way, so that's a, under a different jurisdiction and section of your municipal code. But if it's in, on private property within someone's setback, then it is subject to whatever the...
How would we address the right-of-way issues when it goes through different zones?
So, I mean, it's again, it's a discretionary process when they come to you, so, you know, you can have them screened appropriately, and the Planning Commission, from a screening standpoint, can grant exceptions to fence sites and things like that, even if it were in someone's front yard, you could do that. We have exception processes that are built into those things, because you can't always come up with every single issue that comes up, and so you need discretion when it comes to those things, to do that, just that, to just screen things, as a course. So, I mean, the code accommodates those types of things. And you have processes built into the, that go like conditional use permit processes, things like that, that allow you to get there and have discretionary authority to review them and make sure they're appropriately screened in those types of things.
So Scott, how are we going to handle, say, a web-based, you know, G5 system, where they're basically small pucks on the top of streetlights? Is, you know, it's going to be more of a distributed system, most people aren't even going to see them, but you're still going to have the effects of the, you know, the radiation. So is that, where does that fit into this, you know, this format?
Well, if they're in the right-of-way, they're not on this. But otherwise, this really defers, or, you know, states for radio frequency, you have to comply with federal standards, and there's not really much more you can do at the local level on that.
Okay.
And we've had, you know, we've had some interest in that, and there, all the ones that we've talked about are well familiar with it, they just haven't come forward at this point, but there has been some discussion about that.
Yeah.
Play this out to its absurd conclusion, maybe. So we have people making arrangements in businesses to have the larger, that density, larger capacity pieces. Can we preclude individual residents from making arrangements to have them on their home for a fee?
Well, they're commercial. I mean, commercial in nature by right, so I mean, I would say we probably have that latitude.
What's included in here is, you know, anything goes through the conditional use permit process, so as far as a straight prohibition, I think that it would be something that you would check with your attorney on, comfortable.
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure I'm checking with them on.
Oh, I would just say that it's, within the use criteria, could we limit leasing of residential property surfaces for installation of commercial cellphone distribution?
Basically be prohibiting telecommunications facilities in residential.
On the individual homes, I wouldn't say in the commercial necessarily, but I would, I would say, I worry about the creep that we're seeing, you know, when the people started having two churches on each side of them bracketed with cellphone towers, they, I think they have a legitimate concern that, what, we didn't expect to see this many. And I just remember the last one that we put on the side of a building, we were discussing, well, if the neighbor builds two stories, then they are in the zone where that tower was potentially a hazard, and we had them put a sign on the building that, above this line. So I'm just wondering about the aggregate, or rather, the diffuse nature of these things that, hey, if Verizon's going to give me, you know, 50 bucks a month to put a neighborhood cell tower on my roof, I just want to make sure we have the capacity to say, well, if it's in the right-of-way, which is what I understand the federal regulations are, that's one thing, but we're saying, we want to say you have a legitimate interest in a residential structure, knowing that adjacent to you, you may not have a commercial use as an adaption by that homeowner for income.
So would you say for single-family homes?
I think in the R, especially the lower residential density districts, yeah. The higher ones, I, maybe even the higher ones.
I mean, you see, like, on larger, you know, residential structures, you'll see cell facilities on...
I think we even had one on an apartment building.
You'd be surprised.
We wanted a mixed-use building.
Yeah.
It's got the commercial below, and the apartments upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, so I could, I could see a conditional use permit required for anything in a, anything under a, you know, an...
So I'll pursue the single-family thing. I, it seems like we've permitted through the discretionary process, things that would, you know, for a multifamily, that might be okay. So I'll inquire about that, okay? I'll find out.
Okay.
I could imagine that the telecommunications company is arguing, well, they do argue, that they give you one or two, most of the time it's just one, we must put it there in order to meet the demands of our service, and maybe the more practical way is, is what's also included in here, is we get to have our own consultant, and the consultant says, oh, no, by the way, you could meet those demands at another location, as opposed to just saying, no, you can't put it there.
If I may offer this, I mean, in being forward-thinking, it seems to me that that's an area where we're really going to be expanding our technologies rapidly, and in, you know, in 10, 15 years, it wouldn't be unfeasible to imagine the city offering Wi-Fi throughout the city. I mean, that doesn't seem unfeasible. And if we're precluding these types of facilities in residential, maybe we're inhibiting that possibility.
Yeah, but that would be in the right-of-way.
Well, no, I'm saying, well, I mean, maybe not.
Rather than in, rather than in a residential home, rather than on the site, we would probably put it in the right-of-way, you know, on the power poles or some, or on the streetlights, just because then we could get the revenue, or the city could get the revenue, whatever they think. But, yeah, you're right, you know, it's, you look forward. Okay, we, anything else?
Yeah, just real quick, on the mobile, mobile park, mobile park, right under group residential, okay? If you remember last Planning Commission meeting, I was talking about maybe, like, we're having a discussion for these mobile warming rooms, and so if you, is this, would it have to be an overlay for like an RV park, right? Is that what I'm hearing? Like, here, I'll just give you like more specific, yeah? Let's say we move the treatment plant, they, let's just say they expand the mobile park, okay? If we wanted to entertain those, a couple of spaces for some mobile... If we wanted to entertain those couple of spaces for some mobile warming rooms, would that require an overlay?
In how location? I don't think so. I mean, I think it would probably be a conditional use permit type thing that we would put in there.
Okay, so it would be like, as far as the land use, so it'd be more straightforward?
Yeah, and I think, I think a lot of those, you know, those types of situations, we haven't had a lengthy discussion, and we still need to have that.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, largely the discussion we have, we're not permanent locations, but things that can be brought in temporarily, at which point we have a lot of discretionary authority built into our codes that allow us to do even at staff level. Temporary use permits and things like that can allow them to go and do a location. It could be in a parking lot somewhere even.
Right.
You know, if the city was, you know, willing to do that, so.
Well, yeah.
I'm less concerned, I mean, the only, I guess, the only caveat to that would be is if you're trying to establish them permanently, at which point they need to be a use that goes in the tables. But I mean, I think more of these are, you know, if they're mobile, then the idea would be they're temporary, and so we have the ability to establish temporary uses all over town, so.
Yeah.
I think we have, I think we have plenty of authority to make that happen and then not make them go through an overly regulated process if we don't want to.
Yeah, I was just thinking, like, for hookup, you know, and not part, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand where you're going, but I think we have that. I think we're, I think we're good there.
We're good, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Chapter seventeen point zero six, Commercial and Mixed-Use Districts. At this point, I think I have to recuse myself. I have a conflict. I own the property in the mixed-use district, so I'm going to turn this over to the capable hands of Michael Lucas.
So, panel.
As soon as Jerry leaves, I'll maybe give some direction.
Yeah.
So that he doesn't have to sit out for the entire discussion on commercial. So, so the conflict that he has is related to the MCR zone. He has property in the MCR zone on the south side of, you know, kind of south end by Quetana, up one street. Can't think of the neighborhood right now. And one of the issues that he actually brought up, because he has a construction yard in this location, and he says, hey, you know, our current codes allow you to have a construction yard in the MCR zone, and he goes, "I have three of them on this, close proximity to me in this zone, and there's another three or four on North Main, and we didn't put it in here." So MCR converts to neighborhood commercial, NC, and we didn't put that allowance in here. And I think that was a mistake. We should have put it in there. And I wanted to get your take on it because we have several, you know, sort of, construction-type yard situations in those areas. And we would, if we don't put them back in here, now we're going to make them all non-conforming. And if you make them all non-conforming, then they can't do anything to improve themselves, which I think would be unfortunate because we have, you know, several of them that at least part of the use going on there is, it performs that function. So I'd like to get your commentary on that at this point. And then, when we're done with that, and we get a decision there, then we can bring, we can bring Jerry back in.
Can you clarify where your recommended consideration of that be? Is it, is it a separate additional zone?
Of course, I closed this, that's great. It's under the MCR zone, and it's one of the allowed uses in the zone, and it says, like, contractor's yard or what have you. And so we could put it under NC, right, and under.
So you're looking at it as an additional use line?
Right, so there would be a row added in, under industrial uses on page seventeen. And that would identify construction and material yards, which is defined as the storage of construction materials or equipment on a site other than a construction site, and allow that in the NC.
So that you're saying to place it under the industrial use?
Right.
As a line?
Construction and material yards are classified as industrial.
Okay. And do you have an estimate, Scott, how many of these there are currently?
About a half a dozen, I think.
My, well, I'll see if anybody wants to, questions or comments on it. Richard, do you have anything?
I'm a little confused.
So we have, so we have, I would have been great if I brought the map, sorry. So the MCR zone, there's a small portion of it that sits, is it King's? Ah, just give me a second here.
What up, Mike?
Talaboa. Oh, I think I have it open on this.
I guess my first thought is that this is one of the ideal small-business person things that's a support for small business. You know, we're not talking about having, you know, a Walmart-size yard. These are, these are small-business people when we have the number of.
Yes, Alessandra, thanks. Yeah, so that area is MCR, and then the, a good portion of North Main is, has MCR, and you see back there, there's some construction yards over there. There's the one that's on Alessandra. There's one across the street from that. And there's another one, I think, a little further down. There's a few of them over in this area, and by not carrying it forward, I mean, I would say it was more of an omission than anything else. But it's worthwhile to have the conversation, and, you know, I've been having conversations with Commissioner Luer about different things he could do with his property, and then he noticed in the thing, he's like, hey, it's not in here anymore. Is that still going to be okay? And I was like, it was an omission. So, but I wanted to, we put it in here, and we've rolled it out, so I don't want to automatically make that assumption. I want the planning commission to weigh in on it so that we can carry that forward and say, we have the direction from the planning commission to make that change, as opposed to Scott Graham making that decision.
What I like is, I like clarity when someone looks at the code, being able to envision what something is. And so when I hear industrial, I have all sorts of things in my mind, but one of them, a small contractor's yard, wouldn't necessarily be one of those things I necessarily would assume would be in there. But when I see it as a line item, then if I'm doing some project in that zone, I have a better idea of what that means. And so by seeing it in a list of things as recognition with its specificity, I think it's a help to understanding what we're, we both have allowed and wish to help engender. That's just my.
Scott, you said, I'm trying to envision, like, where in North Morrel Bay? Okay. Okay. Oh, okay, I know where that is, okay. But in North Morrel Bay, you said there's some MCR?
No, on North Main.
I mean, North Main, sorry.
Yeah, there's a couple over there.
I'm trying to picture it, but anyway.
There's some streets that go in, they're like one lot in or something, but they're still in the same zone.
Okay, okay. So what we're talking about is like, like, a, like, someplace where they, like, a staging area for heavy equipment or something, or?
Have construction materials, it's a construction yard for a contractor, you know, as an example. There, I mean, there are various iterations of them out there. The yards that are out there are, I would qualify them underneath this, but they have different uses. The, and it's, and it would require, I think, a conditional use permit underneath there. It's like, in the current code, it's with a conditional use permit. So like, if it was right on, like, somebody was like, "I want to put it right on Main," you might be like, well, why would we want to do that in North Main? Maybe we wouldn't. Or maybe they need to do something specifically to screen it so you don't see it, right? You probably don't want, you know, a bunch of construction materials sitting by the side of the, by the side of the road in an area that's really visible. So, so I think putting it in with a conditional use permit, you know, caveat on it, makes sense to me.
And that's what?
And that's consistent with the current zoning and with uses that we have that are actually out in the real world, inside the city, so. Not trying to do wholesale changes, trying to undo, you know, or put back into the new code, you know, that require, or that, that use.
Okay, okay. So if I'm understanding, you're just, when we're, when we're looking at these things, you as a director would look at it and say, oh, okay, if you want to do that, it's going to take a conditional use permit, then you would have to go to the planning commission for that.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah. And then it would be, you know, so it would be, would have a C next to it, that line item, and, you know, and the NC zone, so.
All right, thank you for the clarity, I appreciate it.
Are we all, we all good with that concept?
Jesse, you have any comments? Joe, you have any comments?
Yeah, just to state the obvious, we, it wasn't intended to be omitted, and nobody's complaining about it, so I think we should certainly keep it in there.
I think this is exactly what it's for, I mean, my, my.
So, and I guess before we invite Chair Luer back, might there be anything else? Any other concern related to the NC zone, which is the former MCR, since he has property in that area? Specifically?
Would West Street be NC? I know West Street has become contentious.
Thought I had the zoning map open, wrote it down. So that zoning is not in that location. West has C-two, R-two, PD, SP, C-two, PD, SD in the current zone. I think we might have made a couple, like, one or two minor tweaks to that in the new zoning, but it's basically the same, I think. Is that right, you know? It's in this area, didn't we make a, didn't we make a change over here? There's West right there. It's right around the corner from here. Do you remember? We can revisit that when we bring the zoning map to you guys, take a look at it, if you will, we can shortcut it that way.
This is a very minor point in the NC district, but I'm, one of my interests is this urban agricultural kind of use. And I was wondering, why do we have an M under the market garden inside the NC? Why not just make that a P use? Is that because of traffic? Because this is already a commercial use that's on the. I'm on the digital version, so mine's.
Page eighteen. And that's for market gardens that are one acre or more.
Yeah, I don't even know if we have any of that, that site here.
If it's less than an acre, then it is permitted.
If it was something, though, I don't know. I don't hate to throw straw-dog examples out there, but if we had, somebody at the power plant wanted to do a market garden on the grounds, why wouldn't we just let that happen? I'd like to encourage urban agriculture.
I think the issue becoming, the minor use permit is just the staff-level permit, and I think it just deals with, if it's a larger piece of property, then it can have unintended consequences. And if it's large, you might be locating it next to uses that might not be compatible, and then we would be noticing it that way. If it's just permitted, you get to go do it, and all of a sudden, the garden shows up right next to, fill in the blank, and we have people that are unhappy, and it's an acre. Whereas, if we went through the minor use permit process, we've noticed people, and so then there's no question about when we put it in that you're not going to get backlash from the neighbors for some reason.
I guess there's aspects of the market garden that somebody has manure delivery, perhaps that's not what you want to have.
There could be things that are objectionable to it, and people, some people just don't like activity next to where they live, you know? If it was next to where, you know, people live, they might just not want the activity next to them. And then would certainly complain about not being noticed, about having this new acre-sized use go in. So, I mean, I can understand the rationale behind it.
Well, and realistically, with cannabis coming down the pike, I mean, maybe that's.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's like, you're going to have an acre of, that's different, yeah, like, right?
Probably want to keep that.
Well, I mean, it'd be less than, for the cannabis, you'd have to have less, you just get a minor use permit for less than an acre, right?
Well, not in the city, no. We don't, we actually prohibit it. We don't, we prohibit the agricultural growth.
Oh, okay. And then how about, like, on clinics, and you have a minor use permit, so that, is that fall into the dispensary?
No, we have a separate ordinance that's not housed in the zoning code. It's housed in the licensing section. And that's mostly to deal with the fact that it's an ever-changing, it's an ever-changing landscape at the state level for how they're regulated. The regulations on them, you know, it just keeps changing. And we're not very flexible because we're in a coastal city, and so every time we want to make a change to our LC, our zoning code, we have to send it to coastal. And so, well, we might be able to make it quickly. That thing just turned into a year-and-a-half process to make one minor change, and then we're probably still three behind from the state.
Oh, okay, okay.
Trying to throw more laws at it as we speak, it's.
Okay, understandable.
The landscape is, like I said, ever-changing. Sorry. Oh, and I would note that we did, Martha just looked up the zoning for the West Street area, and it's actually community commercial, CC, not the NC.
Would you like to grab the chair?
What was that? Oh, yeah, now we can go grab Jerry. So you can, you can weigh in on the rest of the commercial uses. Chair Luer, you should not speak to anything that's related to NC, because that's the new zoning classification where your property resides. So we've sort of went through that on this end, so if you have anything related to that, you need to deal with me on that one-on-one. Okay? Other than that, you can speak to the other three classifications without hesitation.
Seeing as I enjoyed my little break so much, did we want to take five minutes? Okay, let's get through the chapter.
I forgot to bring it up. It was something Betty had brought up about farmers' markets in a residential. Yeah, I did see. I don't know if we want to go backwards, but this might not be the right time. Maybe we can bring it up at a different time, but I just thought I'd.
Well, I mean, if we're talking about it right now, it's, that's actually something that she raised, and so you.
Okay, I mean, I know that was something that is coming, the farmer's market's moving, as I understand. Or is proposed to be moved?
So farmers, well, I mean, right now, it's going to re, there's the Saturday farmer's market that's on Main Street, and it was going to be reconfigured on Main and extend across Morrel Bay Boulevard and close it down, and then that, people didn't like that, so now they're looking at keeping it on Main and then wrapping it up, Morrel Bay Boulevard, I think, to the, to the east. Anyway, the idea, and the reason why that we have conditionally permitted uses in all of the zones, because you could have it on residentially-zoned property. You could have it on vacant residentially-zoned property, but it would go through a conditional use permit process, so it goes before this board, because, and I think the issue that Betty raises is, why would you have that in a residential zone? Well, maybe you wouldn't, but maybe there are locations where it might be appropriate as a pop-up market-type thing, or, you know, you know, people always look for the vacant piece of property to do things on, and, you know, that's probably why it's there.
Well, it's also a conditional use, so it's got to go through a process of review.
Exactly, so it's, yeah. It would go through the full, you would have to do the full noticing, and the neighborhood would know, and get the way in, and so, yeah, I don't think there's really an issue there.
I guess the one, the one question that I'll ask about that, so we have the, in the potential residential districts, we have these individual home occupant businesses, like small farmers. They could get a community farmer's market together, aggregating their small businesses in a street, and ask for a conditional use permit for a farmer's market.
Yes?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of a positive spin on, as well as, yeah, a bunch of people you don't know showing up in the front of your house.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, again, the whole idea behind having the CUP is so we have control over what it looks like and how it functions, and when it functions, and how many folks are there, and what's the, you know, what's the intensity of it? You know, you probably don't want to have a single-family lot, throw it on a single-family lot that's 4,000 square feet. That probably doesn't seem too appropriate, you know? But if you had something that was a little larger, and depending on where it was at, it might be okay. You know, I don't. Yeah, that's a good point. Martha says if there was, it was going to be at a school, which is in a residential zone, or a community center in a residential zone, like that, so. Could be any of those things, I mean, there's certainly different opportunities. And we do have, we don't have a lot of vacant land in town, but we do have some, so.
Do we have any concerns about the other three districts?
I just had on visitor-serving and in single-room occupancy establishments, it almost, it almost seems like, I don't know if that, we'd want it to be for transient housing, you know, more for, for like hotels and stuff, but those are also when they're, they're not very well kept up or, you know, in transition. They tend to be, you know, single-room occupancy establishments. So do we want those? They're not permitted in the visitor-serving, but do we want to look at that, or what's the thinking on that?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just, I'm more speaking out loud, so, yeah, yeah.
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking of some of the motel. So, I'm thinking of some of the motels, you know, backstreet, two streets up from, up in North Moral Bay, where they're, you know, they're probably not real high occupancy, but they...
Might need to actually, need to do a little research on this, because I, there might actually be a policy that addresses this in the housing element, at which point we need to be consistent with that. So, we need to look that up. But I would be interested in hearing the rest of your, you weigh in on what you think about that.
I don't have any problem with making, you know, things like that, something that comes up for a conditional kind of use. Because it changes the nature of the clientele a bit. But, you know, I think using the housing stock, whatever form it takes, is a wise thing to do when we can. And I think if it's not permitted, but comes before some review, I think that's not a bad thing to have.
Rest of you?
If I understand this, it would be converted, a motel is converted into long-term housing for people at that economic level. And it would come before this board for some kind of a conditional...
Just a use permit, yeah. And we might, and again, we might actually have a, we might actually have a policy in our housing element that speaks directly to this. I don't know, I'm not sure. I had a similar policy in the housing element that I had when I was at Pismo that did that. So, it was a, when one has, we had a policy in the general plan that said, hey, don't convert visitor-serving uses. And then we, in the housing element, we said, hey, these make good residential uses as they age.
I wouldn't want to categorically prohibit that. I'd like to talk about it, and maybe it's right, and maybe it isn't.
It's a conditional use permit would be fine.
Be, well, go ahead, Richard.
Okay. I'm clear, so, I don't know if I heard you correctly, but like, if you had a motel, yeah? And you say, hey, man, I want to make a bunch of affordable housing, just change units, conditional use permit for the board.
Correct.
Yeah, solid.
And so, what you've seen with some of these things that have been converted over time, you've all probably seen them. And we have some in town that were old motels, like Motocore-type things, that have been, that were converted to apartments. So, you do see those. And a lot of times, you have, they were really small rooms, and they didn't function very well as hotel rooms, you know, maybe many years ago, because they ended up being too small. So, they didn't make really the industry standard, people didn't really want to stay in them. And so, it became better as a residential, you know, type use, and they got converted because of the size of the rooms sometimes.
Would that address, like, one time, we talked about Pismo. When I had my coffee shop there, in the El Pismo Inn, next to Harry's. I wanted to put a hostel above, you know, and they have a shared bathroom. Would that be something that would be in this kind of genre?
Hostels is a separate use category.
Because you have a shared bathroom and stuff, is that what you...
Well, and they, they're way more dense. I mean, the hostels, I'm thinking of are like buck beds, wall-to-wall.
And it's the difference between less than 30 days and over 30 days.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was going to bring up, is the kitchen, the kitchen thing. I mean, is it with kitchens, without kitchenettes, you know, kind of thing? I think I would, it would depend for me on whether or not the kitchens were included. I think informally, you have this going on already, and the regular hotel rooms were, you know, we have long-term, I know of a few people that do that. Without kitchens, so I don't know that we need to specifically address it.
See, yeah, this was, this used to be a major form of affordable housing. It was like when San Diego did the Gaslamp District in their downtown. They took out 40,000 SROs to convert to that area, so they could turn it into, you know, a restaurant and, you know, retail area. So, but that's 40,000 units of the stock that was gone. And so, these, now you're actually seeing some of these come back as, I just read about a place in San Francisco where they're doing a single-room occupancy building in the middle of San Francisco with 300, you know, 240 square foot rooms, 200 square...
And no kitchens or nothing, huh?
No kitchens, shared kitchens.
Well, that's the thing with efficiency dwelling units, and are they efficiency dwelling units, are they not efficiency dwelling units? Is it transient occupancy? I mean, durations, a lot of questions, a lot more questions for me than answers, I think.
So, conditional use permit.
I'm tempted to, I'm tempted to, no.
All right, you've not given me directions.
I think I'm the minority, but...
So, can I get a thumbs up from three of you that you want a CUP, and we're okay? I got two thumbs. I got three.
He got five fingers, that's good.
Nice. And then we'll actually look into the housing element component of it as well, to verify what's going on there, so.
Let's ask this real quick question. The daycare centers and the visitor-serving commercial, if somebody would propose a hotel where they've got childcare for the visitors in it, does that, is that kind of a secondary thing to the primary hotel use, so they don't have, this is exclusive use of a property?
Okay. That would be an ancillary use, yeah.
So, Scott, where would, this may not fit in this section here, but where would we talk about, say, you know, quote-unquote, tiny home conversions? We're seeing that from mobile home parks turning into, you know, two-story. Where would that fit in in this? It doesn't seem to fit here in the visitor-serving, it doesn't seem to fit in the housing element. I'm not sure. How would we address that? And where?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to develop a, you know, separate policy related to those. Certainly, there's, you know, a lot of conversation about them right now.
Because we're actually seeing one on Main Street. You know, that one small mobile home park that came before us, you know, they just put in another unit, and it's, you know, perfectly fine, because they just replaced an old unit with a new unit. But, I think...
I mean, as it stands right now, you'd probably be looking at conditional use permits for those types of things. I mean, no different than you do for RV park type things. If they wanted to say, hey, it's not going to be that, though, it's going to be tiny home residential, you know, we have the conditioner to quarter, and that type of thing. If we had so much interest in doing it that it made sense to do an ordinance, then, yeah, we could do that. But it is probably, at this point, more of a one-off type thing.
Yeah, and the differential between it that I see is the potential for a second-story there. You know, so the increased, increased density by going up the lots and second stories.
Problems with those tiny homes becomes immediately site-built versus factory-built. And if it's factory-built, then it's Title 25. And if it's Title 25, then it's not regulated by the city, and it's a mobile home park, and it's...
Well, it is and it isn't regulated by the city.
Well, right, but I mean, the construction isn't. It would be built off-site, it would be towed in and dropped off, so. And you lose a lot of architectural latitude.
But you actually don't, because we'd be requiring CUPs for those types of things. And you would have the discretion to say, hey, these are the types of units that you can have in here, and these are the types that you can't. And you could make them bring forward, just like you can for a regular residential subdivision. You're like, hey, these are the housing types that we're going to have, and these are the architectural detailing they're going to have. You can make them bring that to you. Like, hey, these are what they're going to use. Here's the material, here's the color palette. You could make them bring all of those types of things to you, including, you know, how the things are going to be laid out, the landscaping that's supposed to be in there, what's the common area? Because usually, when you have those things, you want to have common area that go with them. All that stuff could be part of a conditional use permit process.
You know, because, just for sake of, you know, fantasy, you know that Texaco area, the Brownsfield there by Delmar Park, right? Let's say you wanted to go, hey, you know what? This is going to be a nice, maybe, tiny home kind of community. One of the things that I envision is like, you know, to address, usually, people that have tiny homes or that, not necessarily, parking issue is not a necessary thing. Well, you don't even have to have parking into these, these things. And, you know, you could have your recharge stations and stuff like that. Would that be, is that someplace that would address certain things like that?
Well, when you're talking about tiny homes, are they on a foundation?
Well, or, let's, again, let's say, yeah, let's say, let's say you're gonna, you're gonna, hey, I'm going to put a couple of hammerheads or whatever you want to do there to try to get, like, but you have, like, maybe a parking area.
So, they're just small houses?
It's just a bunch of small houses.
So, that was allowed, if you remember, in Module Two, we talked about small lot subdivisions, which goes through the discretionary process, which also allows your commission and the, ultimately, the city council as well, to weigh in on, you know, you could waive parking, or you could require parking, and like Scott said, look at the design of open spaces and so on. So, it's just not called, quote-unquote, tiny home, because people use tiny home to mean a lot of different things to different people.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, okay.
Any other comments on this division? So, I guess as businesses develop, they come under the general retail category unless they're specifically listed somewhere else? Where's the discretion of discernment about what's general retail? That's the open category, right?
And that's described on page 81. So, under retail sales, there's descriptions for building materials, sales and services, food and beverage, general retail.
Do we have a specific designation for cannabis-related activities? I don't know if you...
So, we're not regulating that through the zoning code right now. And that was because of the reason I said, right now, the law is sort of quickly changing. And if we put it in here, we're just going to be behind the eight ball constantly. And so, we put it into our licensing section of our municipal code, so Title V is where it's located mostly, that and Title V. Title V deals with personal growths. So, we're regulating out of that section right now. And probably will continue to do that in, you know, on into the future. There are cities that are putting them in their LCP, and, yeah. I mean, it might be okay to do it in, you know, like, three, four, or five years. It might be a good idea, because maybe everything will calm down and we'll have it all dialed in. But right now, the state's figuring it out, and the ideas they have for laws are kind of coming fast and furious, so.
Sorry if I'm doubling up on this.
Totally okay. It's, they're actually really good questions, because you would think, that's a land use, why isn't it in here? And well, it's not in here, because we probably can't be nimble enough to keep up. And so, then you're just dealing with, you have outdated policies in here, and we haven't even adopted this yet. And then we're dealing with state law over here, and we're just kind of implementing that. It's nicer to have it written in your policies. And so, that's why it's living right now, at least in our, in our municipal code sections that deal with business licensing and that type of thing.
So, does that mean the planning commission will never see it, only the city council?
Correct, yeah. They're the, well, in fact, we, you know, our commercial cannabis, medical cannabis ordinance allows us to permit two commercial medical cannabis facilities in town. We started taking applications yesterday. And at some point, you know, we'll have enough of them, and we'll go through the vetting process. And that's not even, it's not even vetted through council. It's going to be hiring an outside firm to do the initial vetting, the background checks, and then it'll go to the department head group, and the department head group will make recommendations to the city manager, and the city manager will choose the two. And there's no appeal process to council, it just ends there. And there's reasoning behind that, and that has to do with removing sort of the political aspect of it that can take place at council, and so they don't have to deal with that.
On the same subject, you know, we, you know, California's a 420 state, and it's, you know, we got your medical. Is there any provisions, like, for instance, for, let's say, a bar to have cannabis available in a, in a smoking room, for instance, in a filtered smoking room for that?
Not currently allowed. We haven't embraced the recreational side of things, although the city did vote at 67% clip to allow recreational, but we're not allowing that right now. We are teeing up a valid item for the November election that would allow us to tax it, at which point, we probably would look at, you know, developing regulations that would allow us to permit recreational as well. And as part of that, you would probably be looking at things that you're talking about, because otherwise, we have a, so unintended consequences of decisions that you make is, okay, you're going to have these things, and granted, now, it's not all related to smoking, right? They have all the edibles to go with it. And in fact, it's probably half of, you know, what's out there related to it, or maybe more, I don't know. But if you do want to smoke it, where can you do that? Because you can't, we have a smoking ban in the city. And then you have people that are coming to town, and you have recreational, so you can go quiet, but we're, I mean, you don't have a, we don't have, like, our hotel's going to be able to have smoking lounges, and then we have to give them a CUP to do that or something, I don't know. So, there's going to be more things happening as that sort of materializes over time, and we develop our policies. Because I can see issues looking down the road that we don't have addressed, and we're probably going to have to develop policies to pick those things up. So, it's a good point, and one that we'll be looking to as we continue to develop our cannabis ordinances.
Something specific, and this is kind of off-topic, and tell me if it's off-topic too much. But as it relates, as we have a unique situation here with a federal jurisdiction, right out, you know, right in the water, I mean, are there going to be, where does the city jurisdiction end as far as harbor and Coast Guard? And where does that...
Coast Guard has jurisdiction in the water, so does our harbor department.
So, there would be no tiki lounge 420-type?
I wouldn't think that would be a, at this point, a smart decision. Yeah, yeah, I don't think that would be that, maybe the greatest, that probably wouldn't be the greatest idea.
Just curious.
It's an interesting question, though.
I don't want to get in the weeds too much more here, so to speak, metaphorically, but animal daycare is a minor use in the MRC. That strikes me, maybe that should be more C-based. Again, I've got the digital version, so it's a digital page 61. But the, under commercial uses, animal care, sales, services, animal daycare is a minor use permit under the, under the NC, MRC. So, Jerry shouldn't listen to this, but... That strikes me as potentially more confrontational, irritable than a lot of the other things we have in there.
And the minor use permit does require public notice, so the neighbors would be noticed and have the ability to, you know, weigh in. There's discretion allowed, and if there's a lot of controversy, the director can always elevate it to the planning commission.
Are you okay with that?
And it can be appealed, the decision. So, I mean, I think, rightfully so, you point out that there's potentially an issue there, and that's why you have a discretionary process that you have to go through. So, the important thing is that when you have things that maybe don't necessarily always fit in somewhere, that you have the discretionary process, so the notice goes out, so you can, so people get an opportunity to weigh in on something that might not fit where, you know, in the neighborhood where they're proposing it, so.
Scott, real quick, just a quick question. Under custom manufacturing, industrial use, that, is that... Can you just give me some, is it like a machine shop?
Ceramic studio woodworking, custom jewelers. It's onsite production of goods by hand manufacturing or artistic endeavor. Usually involves only use of hand tools or small mechanical equipment, and it's, you know, direct sales to consumers.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like, if you were manufacturing, like, let's say, some kind of a solution for additive or something, that would be not under custom manufacturing? That would be industrial, industrial use?
Right.
Even if it's biodegradable, it wouldn't matter?
I don't think it would meet the definition that Martha just read to you.
No, it wouldn't.
Yeah, it would, so it would be limited to our...
Industrial.
Industrial areas, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, I was kind of joking, but, you know, the 3D printing stuff is getting to the point that they're pretty, they're pretty accessible everywhere. And I would hate to see something that was an emerging technology cut off early, because it's a relatively benign but non-hand toolled thing.
Well, and it includes small mechanical equipment. So, we could massage that language a little bit, but the idea is that it is...
I'm just saying, kind of the makerspace thing, like, down and slow, you know, certainly mirrors our shop. I mean, the younger generation is really, growing up, used to having access to things like this.
Right, that's the intent, and maybe we just... That's the intent, and maybe we just, um, you know, work on that language a little bit to make sure it's included.
Yeah, uh, here, just real quick, on that, would that can be considered, uh, like, uh, like, let's say you have a little brewery going, or you're making a little homemade wine or whatever, uh, would that be under custom manufacturing? Because it's kind of like a...
Um, so, no, that would be small-scale food and beverage manufacturing, depending on the, um...
Okay. Okay, okay, all right.
Any other commercial comments? Going, going, gone.
Okay. Do we wish to take, take five?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead, and we'll try to keep it around five. It'll probably work around 10. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's right. Okay, welcome, welcome back, everybody. Thanks for allowing us to stretch our legs here. So, um, we're now on chapter 17.07, Industrial Districts. Who's got a, anybody have a, uh, an item they want to bring up on this?
I, I, I want to, I got something for you, Scott. You know, one of the things that was, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the current zoning, for instance, the current, uh, zoning where the old concrete plant was, wasn't that, like, considered light industrial?
Yeah, it's, um...
And...
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
And, and it's the same, it's, it has, I think, I believe it has the same zoning as the plant.
It has the same zoning, and so it's a light...
Waste treatment plant, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, because what, what's the bar for heavy industrial? What, what would be considered heavy industrial?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're supposed to change it.
What do you mean? Like, the bar, what makes...
Like, you know, like, you have light industrial, right? And then, or, or we're just going with industrial, that's it?
So, so that, so that area, Martha brings up a good point, in our land use map, that area is changing to open space and visitor-serving commercial, with an allowance that the waste treatment plant can stay there and be conforming, until it's not there anymore, assuming it moves.
Okay. Say that again.
Sorry. Okay, all right. A little more slowly. So, so, we've been going through this process for a while, and the land use map that, that the Planning Commission saw, um, has a portion of that area, uh, you know, designated as open space, uh, open space recreation, I think. And, um, and then a portion of it identified as, uh, visitor-serving commercial, um, moving forward. And then there's a policy in there that says, and the, but these changes don't make the existing waste treatment plant non-conforming. So, we weren't making it, you know...
I see you weren't creating a...
A non-conforming use, yes.
Okay, so, right now, the way that's zoned is...
Light industrial.
Light industrial, all the way up to Lila Kaiser Park?
Hmm, well, so, a por, so a portion of it, as you, I need to look at two different maps.
Yeah.
Just give me a second.
Sorry.
No, it's no problem. I, I, it's good that I have the ability to, you know, pull it out here and look at it. So, that's right at the road. So, maybe I was, gosh, it's super hard to see.
I should ask, is there, is there a way to get the map up on the screen? The zoning map up on the screen?
I don't know. I think so. Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can, yeah, we can look at that. I was just trying to look at the, um, area and see where the lines for the existing thing are drawn. It's just I can't, can't see that. It looks like the, um... It looks like the, uh...
If you can get to the internet, there, you can pull off the planning map. Zone map.
One of the, see, the, just so, uh, uh, one of the things I'm thinking is that there is, we have a, uh, that's also used as a staging area, or, uh, like you would consider, what, what was that other zone that we considered, where you have construction equipment, uh, and...
MC, oh, the NC, which would be NC, was MCR?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and districts are, are different than uses. So, an, an industrial use is different than, um, these districts which are industrial, general, and industrial coastal dependent. So, um, where these districts are located coincide, you know, are, um, consistent with the land use designation map that you looked at with Plan Morro Bay.
So, it's possible to have a industrial use not in an industrial district?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
For those, those of us having seen your moments with the zoning map in our mind, where is the M2 currently? Especially the part of that that deals with coastal dependent? Is that, is that, that's not that stretch?
M2 is Dynagee.
Dynagee, is that pretty much it?
And, and that is one other location?
Dynagee, the...
Is it that little strip?
In the area where Cayucus's lift station is, uh, at the north end of town, on East Side of the Highway.
Oh, the, the Station 5?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
And that just, that's a pretty small little piece.
As, and the, yeah, and then there's the, the bulkhead.
Beach Street District.
Where the pipes go out into the water.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That little piece of the bulkhead is also, um, M2. So, it's just, it's, it's literally those two areas and, um, and, and Dynagee.
Now, Scott, while we're talking about that area, is that area where those pipes go out, if memory serves, years ago, that there was a, I was under the impression that the city actually owns, uh, like, goes out to the beach and then owns those easements out into the water? Is that true?
No, we don't own anything related to those, um, pipes out there. That's all Chevron.
That's all Chevron, and they, the easements are not ours?
No.
Okay.
So, we, we, we did extend our, um, so back in 2007, when, uh, we went through the LAFCO review of our, uh, sphere of influence, and they, and we had a huge sphere.
That's right.
I mean, we were like, you've heard me say this before, we were trying to annex the Tascadero.
Yeah.
And so, when they, they said, hey, you don't have water to build out here, and so they just snapped, or at least no SOI, you snap it to the boundary, with the exception of Dog Beach.
Right.
They left that in our, um, our sphere of influence, because there was a lot of public out pouring toward that.
Right.
Um, and then there's an area that's in the, um, in the Back Bay, uh, that's, uh, also included in the sphere. It's not shown on this map, because it's not sphere backed.
Don't, don't we have a industrial coastal dependent use up over here off of Beach Street coming towards us? Like, uh, what was it, Market Street and stuff? I thought where Jeanine's was?
A use or a district?
I think it was a district, and it was part of the Beach Street, Beach Street plan, if I remember right.
Um...
And it correlated, uh, to the fishing industry. I mean, it was...
Because it's where a couple of those, those larger buildings are, and they're trying to do some mixed use things.
I mean...
I thought that was industrial coastal dependent, which always seemed odd.
Um, the only areas left as industrial coastal development dependent district, um, is that, that area at the north end of, of Morro Bay. The very north end.
Yeah, are we talking about the Measure D area?
Well, he's talking about where the station 5 is, from, this is right to, like, Toral.
By Toral Creek.
Yeah, no, Toral Creek, yeah, you go there, and it's that, that's the area, it's just a little piece.
Where Cayucus is put in there.
Yeah, well, and that's going to, in that area...
No, is that where their, where their work is going?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just, we just met with the TPO, that's what we had the other day.
Right.
Techy prems are... This stuff's all getting taken pay on the flat wall over here, and you pick a chunk of this, and then, I think, two million dollar grant funding. So, at some point, they might be able to get rid of all that, because they'll only use a lot on their, their lift station, and then the pipe, the, one pipe left that goes out, because they're going to use one of those Genron pipes, Cayucus's, for their outfall.
Since there's a limited number of sites, this is, this is just structural related stuff. You know, we have the agriculture in the ICD with a P with a 1 after it, which I'm, I'm assuming, even though it says coastal development, coastal-related uses, is that include mariculture type things then?
Yep.
And then, I guess, following up on the types of things we were, we were just discussing about fabrication, and, uh, again, has limited, as near as I can tell, application, but when we have things like the, uh, where was it? The custom manufacturing, that potentially could be a, a P or an M or a C with a 1 after it as well. So maybe once, what about a boat builder or something like that?
Potentially, if you are thinking of it just kind of theoretically based on this, but it's such a, a specific, really, one property thing, and, um, so that, really, the idea is carrying forward, um, the existing, acknowledging what's there, um, but, you know, really, um...
No, we're realizing that at some point, we, we really want to look at the whole, the thing much more holistically for that large property.
Well, no, it's just a small, it's not that large of a property, and this...
I'm talking about the Dynagee.
Oh, well, that's not this district.
That's not.
So, that is visitor-serving.
Okay.
We have portions of visitor-serving, and then, Kim, did you tell that the large?
Okay.
So, the intake?
It's purely that...
Okay.
I'm sorry, what do you call the...
Cayucus's lift station number five?
Yeah.
Property that's there.
That's the, the only property.
That's the only one.
It's pretty small.
And as I said to Scott, if it were up to me, I would have gotten rid of, of this district, because I don't like to have a district for one property.
So, where's Beach Street?
But you could put a professional office.
Yeah, that's kind of weird.
Again, not, um, because it is such a unique property, not going in to really change anything, um, even if, you know, it's likely not going to happen. I think this is almost a holding spot for it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in the process of, right now, working with the Cayucus Sanitary District, the Trust for Public Lands, um, the Cayucus Land Conservancy, um, Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo, and, uh, and the county, and county parks to acquire pieces of the larger Chevron property there.
Right.
That's actively happening right now. We just met with Trust for Public Lands last week. Um, and so, as that starts to shake out, um, you know, we'll know more. And, you know, it may, it'll make more sense later to change those land use designations, because they're likely all going to be related to open space. Various types of open space.
I hear you.
And it'll probably end up being, I mean, if we're able to acquire the properties and getting close, um, you know, the city will potentially end up with, uh, you know, portions of it that, that might, might end up with portions of it of Dog Beach, and then the county ends up with the other, the piece between them and, between that and Cayucus, about half of it, I guess. Um, but anyway, that's conversations that have been happening about this over time anyhow, so we're actively working towards that. We'll see if it happens, um, you know, sort of cautiously optimistic about that, um, looking forward.
Scott, just real quick, uh, you know, Cayucus still going to use that lift station just pumping up, 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 up Toral? Is that where you, is that where you guys left it industrial?
Yeah, they're going to have their lift station there, they're going to, they're trying to, you know, use one of the outfall, one of the pipes that comes out of that head, out of the head wall there, um, for their outfall.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and so, it's because, because right now, and it's, that's kind of a win-win, I think, for Chevron, because Chevron, not unlike Dynagee, is required to decommission their lines that go out into the water.
Right.
And so, if they only have to do, I think there might be three there, if they only have to do two, then they just saved all the money that it takes to pull the third one out, and so they can, so Cayucus can, Cayucus can use that, so...
And then just, they'll just have to go out deep enough, and that's it, right?
Yeah, correct. And those go out pretty far, so they're probably okay with where they, where it ends, I think.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I've gotten really totally into the details of that so much, but, um, but yeah, that's what they're trying to do, and it just kind of makes a lot of sense there. So, they've been having ongoing negotiations with Chevron for a while, you know, they acquired the property where they're, um, where they're going to build the treatment plant, and, uh, so, yeah.
And, um, the city is, so, as far as like the process, you know, like what we're doing at our, our update, so the city going to, is basically issues Cayucus a permit, right, for that lift station? Or do they have a review, or?
We, we, yeah, we could, we, we, that could be the process. Likely, if, it would happen at the same time they're doing the, um, the outfall line permitting.
Right.
And we will probably, um, agree to a consolidated permit, um, through Coastal Commission.
Okay.
Because otherwise, they have to go through two permitting processes, and really, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. I mean, I would say, hey, permit it through coastal, we'll make our comments related to that application and do that. And these, that's my sort of thought process as I sit here today.
Okay, so, you know, pulling up the zoning map, we, once again, most of the industrial area is either the, the power plant. There's, there's a little bit out on 41, essentially where Miners, Miners is, and then you've got that little, that little blurb talking about the lift station area. So, that's, so, so we don't have a lot of, a lot of area other than the power plant and a little bit out on Miners that, out on 41, that seems to be... So, do we have any other questions about the industrial?
I, I have one question, Scott. And it's late, I'm sorry, you probably have answered this twice already, but, um, okay, so cannabis is going to be permitted through your licensing, is land use of any, of any consequence in that process?
So, we identified the zones where it will go. Okay? And so, what I mean by that is, the ordinance in Chapter 5 says that the zones that you can put, um, the commercial cannabis businesses in. And, um, and then give us some things, you, you have to provide buffers to schools, uh, 600 feet, I think.
Tentile markers.
And parks, I think, 100 feet. Um, so, we're only going to have two right now. So, I mean, it's not, not a huge issue. So, basically, you know, it, when you outline the areas, it kind of is a little bit of Quintana, little bit of Morro Bay Boulevard, little bit of Main Street.
So, it could be any, it could be in any zone necessarily?
No, it's, it's identified in, I think, the C1 zone, um, and, right now, I'm drawing a blank, but it's more than one. It might be C2, C1. I know it's mostly C1.
So, it's not going to be industrial?
Uh, I don't, I think, well, it's the, it's, I think, I think it's allowed in C1 and C2, maybe? So...
Okay.
So, it is land use dependent to a degree?
It is, and it'll be something that we end up having to update once we implement the change in our zoning classification.
You know, I just got a comment on the industri, industrial part. You know, I, I'm always kind of thinking, you know, let's try to get, like, different kind of jobs going in, into Morro Bay, and, and we're pretty, pretty limited on what we can do as far as, like, the... as far as like the industrial part and it's really nothing. Is it, is, is, can it, the other question is can industrial be mixed use? Like residential and industrial use?
No.
Use so relies on industrial.
Those occupancies would be incompatible, you would think.
Right. There is some residential uses already in your industrial districts. And so those are permitted if they're existing, but you couldn't have any new residential use units. There is an allowance for a caretaker unit. And then the types of uses, and this is really your general industrial district, really allows quite a bit as permitted in order to kind of, you know, these are the areas identified for those job generating uses and so there's flexibility built in.
Okay, let's, if we've got that knocked, knocked down, let's, any other questions on this, on the industrial districts? Okay, chapter seventeen point zero eight, public and semi-public districts. So we have public facility, park and recreation and open space. So if I remember right, Scott, most of the public facility is the city hall and.
City facilities, it's parks and stuff like that. Schools, yeah, schools, thank you.
Yeah, and then the fire station and that, that area right up in there in town.
Yeah, and for whatever reason, we, we didn't have all of those, you know, properties picked up as things like that in our previous zoning, I don't know why that was. We, some of them were, some of them weren't, it was just kind of random. And so this sought to resolve that, I guess.
So what happened with the, the parcel that's for sale outside the cloisters that was designated for a fire?
So we said we didn't need a fire station. The council gave us direction to sell the property. We entered into a memorandum of agreement to sell the property to a developer. And you're scheduled to see that at the next planning commission meeting, I think.
So was that, was that ever zoned, public facilities?
Nope.
Okay.
It's always zoned residential. City even at some point in the past tried to subdivide it without a coastal development permit. It was slapped on their hand by the coastal commission and said, look, your map's not valid without your CDP. And it's pretty clear in our ordinance that it wasn't. I don't know why we went down that road without doing it, but we didn't.
It was, it was a horrible map.
So, so anyway, we have the, so we, we, we do have an agreement for sale. It is proposed with about six lots on it right now. And again, you're gonna see it, I think, at the next meeting.
Good.
Corporate yard, is that considered a public facility, DSA plant?
Yeah, it's the, the definition.
On page eighty-four, there's a definition of public works and utilities.
Corporation yard's in there.
Okay, um, okay, uh, because, because the corporate yards stay in, right? And the DSA plant stay in, right? So that's gonna be considered public and semi-public district there overlay or what, how are we dealing with that?
Yeah, well, I mean, right, we're at, now, because things have changed, we're probably gonna have to alter the land use map to reflect it, so.
Yeah, it looks like we're M one P D one.
I mean, it's interesting, technically we don't have to because we put language in here that says it's compliant. We don't make it non-conforming. But that's not how you do it. So we'll have to go back and change it.
So where are our open space? Basically, the, the beach side, you know, at the bluff up in, you know, is it North Park area or the North Point area? I'm looking on the map here. So.
So opens, I mean, all the, the open space areas, certainly state parks and the golf course.
Yeah.
And then we have some other smaller areas, I think, that, that are just sort of scattered throughout town.
So the active recreation areas such as the golf course are in the park and recreation district. Open space areas, which are really open space undeveloped, parkland habitat, natural resource areas, those are in the open space district. So you somewhat have that existing in your current zones where you have, is it OA one and OA two? So like the beach is open space, whereas like the golf course is park and recreation.
So where the state park marina is, that's in H, but it's, the, looks like the parking lot is in OA, OA dash two. So where does that, what happens with that in the new zoning? And do we have a harbor district in these districts or is that part of the waterfront plan?
So let's go back to the last question that you just asked, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so pulling up the planning map, I've got the state park. It looks like at the mean high, mean tide line is in OA dash two P D. And then the, but below the mean tide line, you have H. So the actual slips are in H, but all the supporting facilities are in the open space.
We have open space recreation for the areas that are on land. And then we have harbor, harbor, the harbor navigational ways, land use designation on the map for the, the facilities that are in the water.
So with the new designation, does that go into parks and recreation or does that go into open space? And would, would those facilities that are there be allowed to be rebuilt?
Say that again?
So if the facilities that are there, would they be allowed to be rebuilt in case, you know, something, they blow down?
The P R, the P R would allow it, but the food beverage general.
So this is, yeah, this is the, this is the harbor, the open space area that's around it and it's, you know, it has, it all has that, it has the whole, the harbor navigational ways. Land use on top of.
Yeah, it's at the bulkhead, it's at the, the jetty line.
So I mean, it has, so it allows for the things that are there.
Okay, so they could be maintained and rebuilt.
Correct.
But it just couldn't be expanded.
No, it could be expanded.
They're in the harbor district.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's an allowed use.
Are they in the harbor district or are they in the open space?
In the harbor district.
They're in the harbor.
Okay.
That's the existing zone. And then it's got, and it's got the open space recreational around it, you'd be able to put it there too. You can have ancillary facilities to recreational open space.
All right, here's the public, we had a difference in maps.
Yeah, I mean, this comes into it there. Something crosses over, I don't think it's super accurate. About the, about the.
What's that?
Yeah, underneath it, you can't see.
They dredge.
But it doesn't matter, I mean, even one of these things would allow for the stuff that's there, so it doesn't look like.
Yeah. Yeah, but they didn't.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
They didn't dredge into any, any of the slips. They just, they just took.
As long as it covers the docks and stuff, that stuff, then I'll be put back. So could the. So could the docks, so the docks that'll be put there, they could be expanded because that's allowed in that waterfront area. Right? So maybe we just need to look at it and verify and we can redraw the boundary line to make sure we're picking it up. Well, we'll just, we'll just make sure that we're picking up all the things that are there within it, so it's not a question.
Okay.
Because right now, I'm, I'm looking at the land use map and, and Martha was looking at the, the draft zoning map for the area. And without having like this overlaying on top of the aerial, it's hard to tell what we're picking up. You know, it, it shows the thing cut out, I just, I just can't tell you what it's on top of when I look at it because it, there's no, there's no aerial underneath it. So we'll make sure that we map it so it's correct.
Okay. Okay, just a concern.
Go back to the, I'm sorry.
You go ahead, no, go ahead.
With the PF category again, is, this is the way that we tell the school district what they can do to sublet the redundant school. These are the allowable uses there until they would ask for something else to happen at some point potentially.
Morro Bay Elementary.
Yeah.
So the school site that you're talking about is in the RH district. So, and just to clarify, so the public facilities district doesn't mean that every single public facility that there is, is in that, that district? That if you look through the allowed uses, there are some public facility type uses that are allowed in other districts. But these are the ones that are reserved for that district.
Okay, do we have any other questions on, on this chapter? Okay, moving on to chapter seventeen point zero nine, waterfront and harbor area district. This area encompasses the measure, measure D area. And so we've had plenty of discussions about that. So we can't change the, the wording to measure D, but it would, it would have been nice if they clarified it when they, when it was on the ballot. One of the things that, if we look on page thirty, number two, item B, paragraph B, permitted uses. And it says, existing uses may remain and be redeveloped in the same use provided the use is not expanded or enlarged. And parking is provided pursuant to chapter two, our, our favorite to be determined, parking and loading. So one of the clarifications that we've run into before is the attempt to move uses, saying that as long as they kept the square footage allowed, that they could then put them in a whole new building. And that wasn't the, from, from our discussions, that wasn't the, the intent of measure D. So I would like to have, have it clarified that, such that the uses, if it has been continually in operation with no lapse greater than six months. And then also after not expanded, enlarged or moved. And parking is provided pursuant to chapter parking and loading, you know. So I, I think, you know, I would like to see a little clarification on that. So that, so that we're clear that uses, once they've been abandoned for more than six months, that they're not allowed to go back into the measure D area. And a use cannot be relocated into a different structure, even if it, even if it is a continual use. So.
Jerry, on, on that, just bouncing off that. I, what comes to my mind right now is dockside three.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so you tear that down?
Yep.
Forget about it with the restaurant, right?
Right, and then right now we're seeing a proposal, you know, or talk that, well, dockside's, you know, we're gonna relocate that restaurant space to a new building. And they've already got the approval to do that.
Yeah.
And so then, once this, okay, but dockside three is, you know, it's really part of the fabric of Morro Bay and it's historical and everything. So what if we just keep it there now and still keep that other?
Oh.
That other square footage there and then now, you know, keep dockside three.
That's what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about. So I think we need to clarify that once a use is abandoned, it can, that use cannot be moved to a new location without, without being re-permitted.
Would, one of the things when I looked at that, at one time I was talking, was talking to Mark, is talking to Zini. He invested a lot of money in to get it up to speed and everything. And then to me, when I was looking at it, is, would it, would, is there a provision for having an iconic building, having it an icon?
Yeah, but that land use, that use has already been moved to the new Verge's building.
Yeah, because it's, I, I, yeah, there's some kind of a lease thing going on, yeah, okay, okay.
So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to clarify in this is that, that that use, if it's continual, it's a non-conforming use to measure D. And so once it, it cannot be moved. You know, if it, if it's abandoned for six months, then it, it cannot be replaced. And if it's, if, it cannot be relocated to a new building is what, which is what happened down there. You know, pretty much against what measure D, you know, states, categorically states. So, does that make sense, Scott, or do you follow?
So our non-conforming ordinance kind of does that already, but would still allow you to, at least based on city's practice, would allow you, if you discontinue the use for more than six months, to reestablish it in that new building. So it would allow you to do what they're doing, you know, like what, what happened there. And then you come in and you need to, so you're required to invest in a lease site, you have to, you don't have a choice. If you want to continue the lease, otherwise the city's gonna go out with an R F and give it to somebody else. So they come forward and they want to redevelop the site. So you have a non-conforming use there, you tear it down, build the new building back up and then, and that use stays there and continues forward after the building, after the new building happens.
But as long as it's compliant with measure D, it would be allowed.
And so that's, so that's not, that's not the way our non-conforming ordinance reads.
But that's the way measure D reads.
It allows non-conforming uses to remain and then, so the only thing that you can take away from that is it says non-conforming in there.
Right.
And then, in, in measure D. And so you, the only thing that you can look to, to say, to see what, what, what non-conforming means is the city's ordinance related to non-conforming uses. And it simply has the limitation for it to not be discontinued for greater than six month, six months now, it used to be a year. So the six month piece is gonna make it more difficult for that to happen, right? Because how long does it take you to build a building?
Well, if it's in permitting process, then is that use suspended or not?
Doesn't say.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem with that, you know, as long, but what I do have a problem with is, what we've got is we've got a grandfathering in of these uses and a shuffling of where they are, which was totally against the spirit of, of measure D, which was supposed to take the non-conforming uses and when they were no longer viable, was supposed to, they were supposed to be abandoned and that, that then property or that then site was to be compliant with measure D. Pardon?
The grandfather in place.
Right, right. So as long as it stays there and it stays as a, you know, as a non-conforming use, it's allowed. But if the, if the use is no longer conform, if the. But if the, if the use is no longer conform, if the use is abandoned, I don't think it should be moved to a new building that's totally separate from where it was. And I don't think it was ever intended, measure D was ever intended to do that, to have that allowed. And we had, we had that discussion and the developer, you know, the owners of that building came down differently on that discussion than I did.
So you're saying that the site specific.
This is strictly for measure D.
Yeah, yeah, right. So.
So if you want to build a new building, that's.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta abide by measure D.
You've got to abide by measure D.
For real, yeah, okay.
You know, that's, that's all this would say.
Well, we're saying, I mean, in the, in the, in the event that the building no longer can function, has to be torn down, we're talking twenty, thirty years from now. So it literally has to be built on the same footprint.
Not necessarily. It just has to conform to measure D. You know, the, you know, essentially what's happened, you know, okay, let's do a specific building. A specific building, you know, is the Verge's new, new building, okay? It's nothing like what the buildings that are there. But, you know, part of it is still compliant with measure D and that would be fine. But the part that wouldn't be allowed is the part that was not, was non-conforming. And they, and they moved that square footage from a whole different building, put it in the new building and say, well, we're complying, it was non-conforming use, so I can move it. I don't, that was never the intent of measure D, from my reading of it.
Mm-hmm, I agree, I agree.
You know, so.
But, but, so, but we have to, do we have to provide some wiggle room so that if they, in the event that they want to demolish a building and put another building on that site, and it begins to look a little different? You see what I'm saying, I mean?
It's as long as it's measure D compliant, or if it's, if the use is continuous.
But doesn't it go to the point of it's on the same, what does it mean to say the building, the new building is on the same site? I guess that's what I'm getting at. If it, you know, if it, and I'm, and I'm asking.
Clarifying question.
Yeah.
If, so measure, measure D's enforceable period, right? Measure D provisions? Its issue is it's not well-defined.
It's.
People will tell you that it is, but believe me, we would be having this conversation if it were.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we just had this.
Yes, some things are very clear in it and then some things are not. And that's, that's where you run into the problem. And, and one of the things we did with our non-conforming ordinance was to shorten the timeframe on it to six months from a year. So it makes it more difficult for the, for things like this to happen just in general. Because good luck building a building in six months.
Well, are we talking application date of the permit? Are we talking?
I mean, from the, the moment that the use continues to the moment it restarts again. Six months is what's allowed in there.
That's impossible to do with a coastal, I mean.
Yeah, see, I don't have a problem if it's, if it's in the permitting process, you know, as being a continuing use. Because I, you know, I know the permitting process. But what I have a problem with is taking a non-conforming use and moving it to a whole new building. And that, that essentially had been abandoned and moving it to a whole other building, then tearing down that building and then coming back and say, well, this is now a historical building, we should, we should allow it and it should be allowed in its continuing use.
That's not happening.
Well, that's, that's what's being brought forward.
That's not happening.
It's what's, it's what's.
It's not what's, it's not what's being brought forward, don't, don't, don't think that, that's not what's happening.
Okay, well, that's what was.
There's one individual that's interested in that happening, but that's not what's happening and that's not what's been approved through the lease process, so it's not happening.
That's what I was getting at.
Having the conversation doesn't do any good because it's not consistent with the lease. We don't even need to really consider that.
Okay.
So I'm being, I mean, being strong on the point because, don't worry about that. That's not something that, that comes into play because there's a lease in place that says they can't do that. And there's, and there's permitting in place that says they have to bring that forward. The person that's interested in that doesn't have any control over the lease site.
Well, that's what I was saying, is this even really worth talking about at some, at some level? I mean, at some level I'm thinking it's not because, I mean, this is independent of that.
I mean, well, the leaseholder would have to come back and have a conversation with the city and try to get that approved, good luck. Because I think anybody would find that inconsistent with measure D. Because now you'd have two restaurant uses in, in measure D area at that point. You'd be adding an additional one. I don't see that as being.
So the question is, should a non-con, non-conforming use be allowed to be put in a new building?
No.
If, you know, because essentially the building's going to have to be moved. If it's rebuilt in the same location, you know, in exactly, in the exact location and the exact building type, I don't have a problem with it. But if it's moved to a new building, I don't think it should be allowed.
But doesn't measure, doesn't measure D explicitly prohibit that?
No, no.
Okay.
Because it happened.
Okay.
That's, the dockside three square footage allowance has been moved to a new building that's going to be built, that's a totally different building. So.
The building in Morro Bay Landings.
Pardon?
The building in Morro Bay Landings is being, will be torn down, as will dockside three, the building at dockside three is, will also be torn down.
Right.
And they'll be building a new building, a single building, that will contain all of those uses.
So what I'm trying to say is that, that the non-conforming uses in that shouldn't, shouldn't be allowed to be moved to a new building. So whether I did that correctly or not with my, with my verbiage, you know, that, that's where I stand and I guess I need thumbs ups or thumbs down.
But in the current example of the dockside restaurants, this is news to me, so, I think it's news. What's, what's, what will happen to the site of the old restaurant which is being torn down?
It's being removed, there's a little pocket park thing being put in. And the entirety of this, like, so where the Morro Bay Landing is a small little building, it's got the fishing gear, kayak rental. And they do the booking of the boats out of there. Patriot runs out of there and a couple of other ones, I think. That'll be torn down and a two-story building will be put in that location basically. And then they'll reconfigure the driveway in there so the delivery trucks can get in and out of it better because right now they have a hard time getting in and out. And so they'll reconfigure the driveway right there and that dockside three building will be torn down.
And turned into a public space of some sort.
There'll be a small little pocket park there because when they reconfigure the road, they'll be widening it. And so it'll take part of that area and then part of that area will be reconfigured based on when they put the new building in. That's next to the little Quonset out there, that Quonset, that's not going away.
And, and is the square, is the square footage of the existing restaurant increased by virtue of moving it to this new location?
It's the same.
The same. So, so, so nothing, aside from the physical locality changes, but nothing in the way of more non-measure D enterprise is being added to the district? That's, that's the logic of it? Okay, at least I understand it a little better.
Yeah, and my reading of measure D was that those, those non-conforming uses were supposed to be grandfathered out. Were supposed to, were supposed to sunset. As they, as they become, as they, as they stopped, as they became abandoned.
Right, that's what I understood too.
But, but they haven't been. And that's what's, that's what I'm trying to clarify on this, that it gets.
Now I get it.
One, one, one last question. So in a new location, is that property on the same leaseholder? Same service, it's all part of property.
The, the leaseholder of that, of that lease site is, is Bob Fowler. And so he owns the lease site that the, that those things, that those, both those used to, used to sit on.
Change in, not the.
Let's, let's get, I'd like to get a clarification on this.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So we know which way we're going on. And this is probably one of the thornier issues.
Yeah, yeah, for real.
Measure D.
Yeah.
And so, so let's, you know, do we want to discuss this more? Do you guys kind of want to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down to the wording?
What is, what are we proposing the wording to be?
That, that essentially, I think Scott, you can probably do a better job on this than I did, but.
So are we, are we trying to get to the point where if the building a non-conforming use is located in is torn down, that it can't be reestablished?
Pursuant to?
In the measure D area, is that what you're saying?
Well, if, if the building has been, if, if the use has been abandoned.
So that use is going to be abandoned, so the, so you seem to have, so the issue that you raised.
Right.
Is dockside three, we're going to take that restaurant space, put it back into this new building that's going to get built. And you said you don't want that to happen.
Right, because for one of, for one of the reasons was dockside three was not, that use had changed from a fishmonger to a restaurant. So the use had changed and then that, now that, when that building is being torn down, that use as a restaurant is now being.
That thing used to be Thai Bounty or something?
Well, it was a, it was a fish store before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't he, he sells fish there now.
He does.
Yeah.
From local fish, right?
Well, no, they, that's, that's on the other side, that's dockside two. So. So the wording I had was, existing uses may remain and be redeveloped in the same use provided the, the use has been continually in operation with no lapse greater than six months. And, and is not expanded, enlarged, or moved. And parking is provided pursuant to chapter two BD, parking and loading. So. There's probably somebody that can do a better job on that than me.
So if I, if I'm being honest, what I, what I, I mean, I, I think that we should.
Depends if you're going.
Well, I'm going to, I, I think this is something we, we might want to agendize and get public input on. I mean, there's, it seems like this is a far-reaching type of thing that we may want to have the public have an opportunity to talk about specifically. I don't know, what do you think?
So. In ratcheting down our non-conforming ordinance, once the business stops operating in the future, for more than six months, it's gone. And so if they go tear the building down that it's in, you don't get to put it back. Six months, it's done. So, so right now the situation is it's a year. I hope they build the building in a year and get it occupied because if they don't, there won't be a restaurant that goes in there. Because it would be non-compliant with our ordinance, the way that it sits today.
But that's an effective approach, but then you have to make clear that that six months encompasses the permitting procedure. Because someone is going to argue, well, it's only, it only addressed to the six months that's in my control.
So, so how, so let's understand how construction works. The permitting process is irrelevant to this. Because you will demo a building and build a new building underneath the current ordinance. If you do it within a year and you put the new building back up, put the uses back in and, you know, turn the lights on and sell a taco, you're, you're good. If you do it in twelve months and one day, not so good.
But, but.
That's based on our ordinance how it is now, I mean, and so it'll be six months moving forward. So, I mean, you can't build a building, you know, if you built like the building they're proposing to do, that it's not going to be built in six months. That thing's going to take a year. It's, I mean, they're going to be right on the edge of it trying to make it happen. I've always kind of thought, this is going to be interesting to see how it shakes out in the end, I mean.
But the problem with that is enforcement, Scott. I, I haven't seen.
The political will.
With leaseholds, I haven't seen the political will to enforce, enforce the ordinances when they're not specifically laid out, you know, word for word. You know, if there's any wiggle room at all, I've not, you know, you know, I'm, and I'm not trying to cast dispersions or anything, but I've just seen, seen it happen too many times.
So my, my issue with what the language and the intent that you came up with is it runs contrary in part to our non-conforming ordinance. That concerns me. Because now we have two policies that are very similarly written, but different. That creates confusion. So, and I'm also not getting a lot of, a lot of help from your, your fellow commissioners in nodding their head in agreement or telling, or saying that, no, we hate this, or that we love it, they seem non-committed at this point.
I'm, I'm in support of Commissioner Jerry's motion. But I, I wondered though, the wordsmithing of the way it is, isn't the problem and be redeveloped? Isn't that the phrase that's the catch? Because they can remain, but it's the redeveloped that's the problem.
Yeah, so if the, if the use were in the building and, and they went out of business, but in five months they were able to reestablish the use in the building, that would be fine, our non-conforming ordinance allows that. In any building in town. Then the issue then becomes, you want to tie it directly to the development and saying if they tear the building down that it's in, it can't be reestablished.
I guess, could I just offer? I wonder if the, the thing is the moving, not the actual time limit. Because I think you said if it went back into the same building, I don't care about the time. So let's leave the time to the non-conforming section. And it, what I'm hearing is your concern is the moving. So including the same use provided that use is not expanded, moved, or enlarged.
Right, right, that's.
Right, because you can occupy a building, build another one, move the use. You could build a building before you even move, before you discontinue this use.
They, they could, they, they don't necessarily need to take down the first one before they build the other one. They could, that's how they would make it work, if they took it all down, then they would have a problem. I, I mean, I question whether they would be able to build a building in a year even, but they might be able to, I don't know.
Okay, well, just, you know, just for instance.
As an example, I guess.
I'm trying not to be argumentative here. But that use has changed two or three times since, since I've been here. And it hasn't, it hasn't been sunsetted out. So, and it hasn't been compliant. The original use was compliant actually with measure D. But every other use after that has not been compliant. And that's what concerns me, especially in the measure D area, you know, that I, I think we have to be extra special, careful that, that there's a way to sunset, you know, the, the sunset the bad uses out of there.
I'm going to agree, I'm going to, I think that's the three of us.
I, I, yeah, I have to agree too because I, I feel that the, the redevelopment aspect puts into play for an extended period of time the, one of the meager resources we have to support the fishing industry. And I, I think that, that we lose that window to have something developed in a, in a different manner if you continually allow a redevelopment of an, of an existing non-conforming use like that. So I want to, I want to say we should kick it uphill here.
So, so dispensing with the six-month timeframe for right now, without adding some sort of provision, someone can move his enterprise from one area of measure D hundreds of yards away and reestablish it there and claim that it's still a continuing use.
No, well, that's what they're doing.
So, because if I follow Jerry's logic, I'd say yes, it's going to be, I wouldn't be the case.
So, I mean, you, you don't, you don't get to take, like, anywhere else in town, you don't get to do that. You have a non-conforming use and you're like, I want to move it out of this building and put it in that building, like, no, you're not. I mean, people come up, I mean, that's come up over time, people wanting to move from, they're losing their lease and they want to move over here, it's a non-conforming. Like, yeah, you have to go in this other zone, you need to go find a lease space over here, doesn't comply with that.
But they can redevelop.
These are no, this, this area is no different, like, I can't speak to what's happened in the past, I can only speak to what's happened since I've been here.
So, I'm sorry to interject, Scott. Once again, I'm not, trying not to be argumentative, but that's exactly what's happened. They've actually taken a use that's non-conforming and moved it several hundred, hundred feet maybe to a new, to an exactly new building that was never intended, that, that was a completely new building that was never there. So, so how, if you can't do that in other sections of town, why are they allowed to do that?
Again, I can't speak to why they would, I mean, I would say, in looking, in looking at that, you'd be looking at it, hey, if it's on the same lease site, because the lease site's being redeveloped, right?
same lease site, because the lease site's being redeveloped, right? The lease site's being redeveloped, and you can keep the use there, nonconforming, and it's going to stop for a little while, while whatever's happening happens, new building's getting built. And then you put the nonconforming use back in there, and it wasn't discontinued for the year period, then I think you're fine. Because you would do that with any other building that was going through that process in a nonconforming zone. If they went through a big remodel, or reconstruction, or something, and they didn't discontinue it right now for a year, then they would be able to go back in there. But we're ratcheting that down to six months now.
They can't do it in six months, for sure.
Exactly. Although, in this instance, they could, if they didn't tear down the dockside three building until the other building was built.
Yeah, but see, but I would prefer that that physical circumstances I would prefer that they not be precluded from that because of physical circumstances. I would prefer that they be precluded from that by reading the provisions of this zoning code, tells them forthright that you can't do that. I get what you're saying. That's a practical way to achieve it. But I think we should be trying to achieve it, if we will, according to the letter of the law.
Well, I have at least three of you sort of agreeing, maybe four, with something here, so we'll It's late, and I'm not going to try to change the language right now. But I get I get the sort of gist of it. I just need to put my head around it a little bit more. We didn't get to this level in the whole Measure D Subcommittee when we brought it back. We didn't get down to this level of detail.
My concern is that literally the way it's written suggests to me that it overrides the six months, because of the may remain and be redeveloped. That's that to me says
Without even mentioning the six months or the year.
Yeah, so it's the it's the may remain, fine. Redeveloped starts to trigger a new version of it, which then starts to talk about potentially time. But the redevelop suggests that it transcends time, in that you're you're saying by, whatever the proper legal term is here, the text that can be redeveloped. It's almost like it takes a priority over top of the time, over top of the nonconforming use.
And, you know, just this wording is not included in Measure D. This is new wording here. I think we have to be really careful.
I think it's I think this should say, existing uses shall not be allowed to redevelop if not
Yeah. Scott, I think you got the gist of it, if you want to word if you want to see what you can word.
You could you could say something as specific as Jesse was kind of going, that director was going towards, just saying, hey, look, you can't redevelop nonconforming uses. Like, we can get to the, hey, you redevelop the building that the nonconforming uses in, it's gone.
It's not subject to the derivative of time.
It's just if you remove the building that the nonconforming uses is, you lose the use. I mean, it can be that. I mean, you actually seem to be going there. So I was like, we can be that specific if you want.
Part of it is
Get to the point.
You don't need to deal with all the rest of the stuff. If you're removing the use from the site, or the building that the use is in from the site, you can say you lose it.
I think that's what Measure D intended.
Yeah.
And that's what the voters enacted. So, I mean, I don't know that it's really
I mean, part of it, it says in the same use. I'm not sure what that means. Existing uses may remain in the same location, provided the use is not expanded or enlarged. That makes sense to me. Existing uses may remain and not be redeveloped or expanded or enlarged, makes sense to me. So the existing uses may remain clause seems like that's got viability. It's the redeveloped in the same use where I think we start going off of into the deep end.
Okay, I think I have a path forward here. I think I think probably we do speak to the discontinuation of the use over time, even though we have a nonconforming section. And then we also speak to if the building is torn down that the use is in, then the use is gone. You don't have to do anything else with it. We can be that specific. Seems that's where you're going, so I'm happy putting that in there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
If you want to go down the harbor a bit on 3E, I think one of our citizens did mention this, too, the idea of the cooling water intake facility. Is that use trying to be grandfathered here, thinking we'll find somebody for the dinergy plant that would actually use that as a once through cooling? That's sort of been nixed in all of the legal proceedings.
Where are you?
It's right below. It's 3E.
Conditional permitted use. Yamil.
I think they're finding the takes could have been used.
So, I mean, the reason we wanted to leave the intake facility in here is because we've had a couple of uses that have come forward that were interested in utilizing those. And thought, oh, okay, that's they were interesting uses, and ones that would be potentially fine on that site. And so realizing that that could be an asset that could bring in, you know, a use that we don't really we haven't identified yet, but there but we've talked to at least one company that said, oh, that's something that we were interested in. We could use the seawater, so that's
Really?
Yep.
Wow.
Okay, now, doesn't that counter with state law about once through cooling inlets?
Well, it depends on what the use is and how much water they take. I mean, they could
This isn't saying that we're going to use it for that
Right.
That function. It's really just saying, hey, this is identifying what those things are. That's what they were for the plant.
Yeah.
We could call it something else if you want. I mean, it just saying, hey, we could reuse those facilities is really what that's saying.
I think if we just got got rid of the word cooling out of that, because that is it's an infrastructure that cannot be replaced at this point.
No, I I I think that I get it, but I think that, yeah, maybe get rid of
Because cooling is not going to be allowed anymore. But just get rid of the word cooling.
To the water intake facility. What are just out of curiosity, Scott, what are some of the, like, are they talking about maybe like, some entertainment thing? Or like a submarine, you know, or something?
So I'll tell you I'll tell you what it was.
Okay.
Okay, so the company that came forward was a was an international cosmetics company.
Right.
It was all biodegradable stuff that they were making, and they needed water intake because the base of the product was seawater.
Oh.
And and they needed a certain amount of it. And they said, oh, well, you have the intake facility there, we could use that. And I was like, oh, okay. I mean, it was a big company. It just, you know, making it all work. And then when they talked to Dyna G, that didn't really go anywhere. So but it was I was like, oh, I never thought really about that too much. And I was like, ah, we should keep our options open, because that could be something that's interesting to to some use that we just haven't identified yet, because I never really thought that we were going to see a cosmetics manufacturer come in and ask for
Yeah, I can think of a couple of uses right now. You could, you know, you could use it for energy storage as hydrogen hydrolysis, you know, electrolysis, and break down break down seawater into into hydrogen and oxygen. And use that for energy storage for the wind farm out there. You could also use it, you could flood the bottom part of the power plant and use it for a test facility for wave generation machines. You know, you've got a million pound gantry crane that goes across the power plant. It would be excellent for researching wave generation machines. You know, there's you can go on and on and on. It's a resource it's a resource that cannot be replaced, you know, any anytime, so.
I think the point there was as a conditionally permitted use.
Right.
We're not going to tear it out, obviously, I mean, without going through a huge process, but is it a conditionally permitted use, I think, was the question. And I agree with what you all have said, so I think that's what she was trying to say.
Okay.
I have just one question, and I've asked this before to you, Scott, but it's been a while, so maybe you can help me with my recollection. Part of this area, you know, where the harbor district and the waterfront, there was an area that that was had ESHA in front of, like, where the front of where the marine marine museum is.
Down that down that look, yes. So there's so we have we have an ESHA overlay now that deals with that.
Okay.
That deals with all of ESHA areas in town, so unclear to me
I reckon
Why those so we have the map, and it had those areas outlined, and they were in the water, and they could have been, because it was yale grass beds there before.
Right.
And maybe everybody's like, yes, that's what it was. There's nothing in support of that in our records.
Okay.
Because we looked.
Okay.
And I said, I don't know why it was specifically called out there. And in talking with the NEP, it sounded like they don't still have yale grass beds there. And I was like, okay, well, this is just confusing to have this dotted line out in the water somewhere if it doesn't reflect. There's no reason why it's there. And so we got rid of those over the water. If we do identify, you know, beds that are there, we could put them back. It's not it's not a big deal, but you're required to do the same things, whether it's outlined or not. Anytime you're in the water, you have to do the yale grass study, so it doesn't matter. Anyplace in the bay, you have to do the same things, whether it's got an outline around it or not.
Okay, so you're you're saying that the maps that we're presenting to Coastal, those ESHA designation in water on the water are going to be removed, but from a practical aspect, when we any kind of development, there's going to have to be
All the it's really because it's weird to say, hey, here's the ESHA, and then here's the stuff you have to go do, and then have another policy that says, anywhere else in the water, you also have to go do those same things. There was no difference. It was making you do the same studies and everything. So it was like odd that you would just, like, draw the line around this one area and say, okay, that was ESHA. But the entirety of the bay is treated as ESHA from the policy standpoint. So you have to do the yale grass studies, and you have to and you have to have the mitigation measures in place for the marine mammals and everything else, you know, when you're doing projects down there. So, in fact, we we were we've implemented BMP's best management practices into the ordinance to deal with development down along the waterfront. So the minimum requirements, all the BMPs that go along with the development are going to be in there. And then you have to do spite specific studies that might add more. So, I mean, we're trying to ratchet that down and make it more consistent. And it's, again, it's unclear in the record why those things were what they were. I can guess what they what the reason is, but it, from a practical standpoint, doesn't make sense.
Okay, so, you know, so when people come up to me, and so you're from a policy standpoint, you're kind of covering that aspect of it?
We're treating all of the water requires you to go do all of the studies that you would have to do, whether there's an ESHA outline on it or not. So it was just weird to single out that one location as because you look at the map, and you say, that location's different. It's not different. You have to do the same studies everywhere, so.
Okay, Scott, we're coming up on 10 to 10. We started at 3 o'clock.
Yeah, that's probably enough.
What are we getting loopy yet, or do we want to go do we want to go further?
Been loopy.
That's okay.
How much more do we have?
Well, we've got standards. We got that much. So what where are we in the process? Do we do we have to death march through this, or?
I don't know that, I mean, I sort of agree with the fact that you've been here and doing this for hours on end. I think it probably is good that you maybe step back from it a little bit, and we bring it back at a future meeting.
Okay.
As much as it pains me to do that, I think you've had a long enough day, been here since 3, like you said. And I think you started getting diminishing returns on the brain power in the room over time, so.
I think that happened probably at 3:30.
So, yeah, I think we can bring the we'll bring the rest of it back for you.
Okay, so
Thank you, Scott.
Let's finish, yeah, let's finish off this section, and then, you know, next coming up is standards for specific uses. So that's that's actually a whole different thought pattern. So do we have anything else on the on the harbor? Okay, so just I just got a question. Is HAB, is the Harbor Advisory Board seen some of this critical element, or have they is there any of this that's critical?
We weren't making much changes in this area. This is all basically the existing policy.
Okay.
So there's major changes.
There's been no teeter tottering decisions about anything in here limiting the inventiveness of the offshore facility's support. There's nothing in here that's getting in the way of the kind of creativity we've seen.
No.
Or or mariculture
Yeah.
Activity. Okay.
I mean, unless there's something like you if you look at it, and you see there's something more specific you want in here, I mean, this would be the time to tell us.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just try to keep our options open on future future developments, because, you know, we're not smart enough to see what's coming down the line.
Yeah, I mean, right now, right now, you would be able to, you know, if we if the wind farm, you know, does end up coming to fruition, then we have support facilities here, we would be able to have those in the harbor. We'd be fine. I mean, there's nothing in here that stops them from doing that. They don't need they don't need large boats to service them, so they would have options for locating, you know, in the harbor. So I don't think it'd be much of an issue.
Okay, great. Then we'll continue this on a a future agenda item. And so do we have any planning commissioner comments? I've got just one question, Scott, and probably that just that that mobile home that's on Sunset Drive.
We're working on it.
Any movement on it?
Yeah, so code enforcement's working on it, the police department's working on it.
Okay.
And actually, the fire department's working on it. So, yeah, it's it's there's a little bit of an issue. We know where it came from. And we're dealing with the folks that were involved with, one, trying to sell it, and then dropping it off in that location and moving. It's just it's just what avenue to move down, and if we can't encourage them versus, you know, dragging them into court or something, is kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be as difficult as it's been.
Okay, Community Development Director comments? Are you done?
I'm good. I'm toast.
Okay, so at this point, thanks, everybody. Really thank you for a hard day's work here. And we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Sur Street, on July 17, 2018, at 6:00 PM.